And they'll be able to sell, they'll be able to sell those capos in the future for, and make a grundle of money. And that's not government's responsibility for private enterprise. So I've got a problem with that. Now, if you're gonna call those under the dairy operation grandfathered under dairy, I'm okay with that. But not, if, otherwise, uh, you're not gonna, that's my, I wish Rick could have heard all that.
Okay, so understand what you're saying.
That's what you, well, I think that's a question for legal. I don't view what legislation we talked about, the animal feeding operations is the same as a dairy operation. Because I think, I think our operation you're referring to Commissioner Harvey is connected now with the dairy.
Unless.
In both cases that I feel fairly confident in, both would be connected to dairies.
That's, so that's my understanding. And the way I view this, it's feeding operations for the sake of just feeding and basically slaughtering.
Yeah, supplementally feeding.
The state code specifically calls out dairy cows. And so it does apply to dairy cows.
Oh, it does? Dairy? You said dairy cows, not beef cows.
So it, it's both. It's a thousand beef cows or seven hundred dairy cows.
Oh.
Yep.
So this would.
That or above.
Yeah. That, just based on how the state code is written, it would qualify them as a concentrated animal feed operation.
Then, so.
So it's specific to a large concentrated animal feeding operation. So there's a threshold they have to meet before they're classified as such in the state code. So it's seven hundred mature dairy cows, a thousand veal calves, a thousand cattle. So they have to have a pretty large operation before they get into this definition that the state has, has put down.
Scott, it might be helpful to explain the areas where they're at right now, what their current status is.
Yeah. The two that you guys, no, we haven't yet. The two that you mentioned, we were probably on the same page. They're both located in the E two zone. And they've probably just grown over generations to where they have exceeded that large classification for a CAFO. Nobody's out there counting how many, you know, head of cattle they have. So it's hard for us to tell, you know, what threshold they are. But we would probably say that they were not specifically permitted as a large CAFO at any point in time. They just kind of organically grown to that size. Uh, the Western Weaver Planning Commission wanted to make sure they could continue on.
Did we ever have limits on how big a dairy could be?
We had the concentrated.
So it's, we've approached it from very different. It's not seven hundred or a thousand. We, we never did say that. What we did, what we have said is essentially this is how much land it takes to sustain an animal. And so if you are over grazing your land, uh, that's a problem. So our code right now says you are not essentially a livestock feed yard. If your land can sustain your animals, you can supplemental feed them or full feed them in the winter time only. Um, and so if everyone who is outside of that, and because they are feeding all the time, um, that would kick them into a, a feed yard is what our.
Yeah, livestock feed.
Well, I like that. It, it's, it's met this and it's probably, I'm sure we could drive around and just point and, uh, see.
Well, yeah. So what's happened now, as these large dairies, uh, the day, that's become so specialized, you know, to get the nitrates they want for their animals, that they feed them differently now than they used to. And a good example is the grain they give them. Uh, you know, they test the grain and they'll, uh, they'll, they'll buy corn from one area and soybeans from another area. And they mix them all up, bring them here. They provide silage, which most of them grow their own silage. But since they're using all their ground locally for corn and silage, they bring in the hay from other areas. Plus, sometimes depending on the year, they can buy hay cheaper than they can raise hay.
Right.
So all of a sudden, we're getting ourselves in their business. See what I mean?
That's where things get.
Indeed. Most of that I saw what you mean. There was a couple of things in there, but yeah, listen, what you just said, if they've got the property to be able to raise their livestock on, but only supplemental feed through the winter months, that's great with me.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna give two guys or three guys or whatever the number is a golden ticket. Because that, all of a sudden, that, that could be worth a million bucks, ten million bucks.
Right.
If we, if we go ahead and protect under the CAFO, I just whatever.
You know, there, there are can probably, there are some issues here. Let me give you an example. Last year Randy had, uh, moved his elk out to his feed operation.
Oh, here we go.
Well, yeah, under this, he wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Well, would, does he move them out there just to supplemental feed in the winter?
Well, that's not what it said. It said if they supplemental feed, which he does do, but, uh, he would relocate it out there.
He'd relocate what?
His elk. He was moved his elk out there last year.
During the summer?
Uh, uh, well, I don't know what it was. I was driving around seeing him out there. Plus, that one pasture out there, he put, when all his cattle were out back, well, it was the year that we, uh, uh, that we, uh, had high water and we released that water down that little weaver. He had to move all his cattle off of it and he moved the ball up front. He had a thousand cows in there. He had, or eight hundred, I think he told me. That's a lot.
Question is, was it so much that the vegetation on the ground went to dirt or mud or muck or dust? And if it did, then yeah, that's, that's too much.
Yeah, but Randy's a smart farmer. He would allow to do that. Yeah.
Anybody that's got five hundred cows is a pretty smart farmer.
That's right.
And that, that's another way to look at this. If you're rotating your stock in different fields, so it's not over grazing the land.
Right.
You're not a concentrated feed operation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see Randy's neck. Cause when I, when I've seen him, he'll, he'll take them off the mountain and put them down there for a limit, for a couple of months till then. He rotates it back and forth.
Yep.
Which is, you know, if you've got five thousand acres there and a couple thousand acres up there, that's what you do. That's not a feed operation.
That's correct. So the state code does go on to talk about, uh, why, what qualifies something as a feed operation. And it does talk about the land's ability to sustain vegetation essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This gets complicated.
And a lot of times we have sheep farmers and that, bringing the sheep in, um, in the fall time and they graze that area.
Judge Swan used to do that all the time, but you know, in Weaver County, we don't see that like we used to.
Well, no, but you still.
It used to be all the time they did that.
You still have to remember, we have areas like La Plata and some of these others way up there in the east. That they're gonna bring those, but they're, all they're gonna do is, listen, I'm, right now, I wanna, I want people to, I wanna, I want grazing. I want grazing with livestock. I wanna encourage grazing with livestock. And people who have large operations are smart. They're not gonna overgraze because it, it, it's too devastating on their property. You know, I, we can put in, we can put in language to help protect that, but that's like, that's like going to the supermarket saying you can't shoot somebody if they took the last package of coke before you. I mean, there are some, I mean, it's just, I want there, I want grazing encouraged in Weaver County if there are people that can do it, because it's healthy for the land.
So Carl, let's start with the first thing. Do we have to do this?
Do you have, do you have to do what? Do you have to?
To have an ordinance?
If you don't, if you do not have, no, you don't have to have an ordinance.
No.
No.
Okay. And if we don't, what's the red case?
Don't have an ordinance, then according to the state law, you cannot restrict the citing of the large CAFOs. It says the legislative body of a county desiring to restrict citing of a large CAFO shall enact an ordinance no later than February first, twenty twenty-two. So it'd be kind of a free for all if you didn't enact an ordinance by next Tuesday.
You know, the problem I have here, Gage, is this shouldn't be in first and second class counties.
That's how I see it.
You know, if they wanna take some of these rural ones, let them go. But man, counties like ours.
Well, I thought Sando was gonna make some tweaks to this statute this year.
That's the rumor.
Well, I'm looking at first and second class. Utah County is second and they've got a ton of land in their, what is that, west, uh, that west desert.
Yeah, by the, on their side that.
We did talk to them.
But that's all developing right now in the housing.
It is quickly.
And they're not planning on adopting anything. They actually are taking the, the road of not doing anything.
Have they?
We talked to their planners and they, they know that there's gonna be an extension on the deadline with this updated bill. But they've actively said, we're, we don't think this is gonna affect us and they're not doing anything about it. That's their approach. Same thing with, uh, with Davis County. They have not touched this.
Well, they don't. They'd put them out in the middle of the lake if they touched it.
Well, they're, they both happen to be full enough. Well, actually Utah County really isn't. They do have some land. That's a, that's a fact.
Big county.
But it's all on their side lakes. I'm not sure they really care. Or in our case, we do care. Man, we're getting ready to cite a great big business out. Although it's Randy just doing it. So he wouldn't destroy his own situation there.
Well, I don't see, I don't know that Randy is doing it if he's doing it in a way where it's not over grazing the land. Yeah. And so at that point, it's not a CAFO.
Well, so.
I don't think Randy's a feeding off.
This could affect the upper valley, Gage. I mean, up there where there, uh, if somebody had eight or 10 acres, they absolutely, you know, the Browning Ranch or something like that, they could feed.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Totally possible. So tell me again, Cartland, if we don't, uh, if we don't designate a zone for that, then it becomes optional anywhere?
Yes. If you don't restrict the citing of it, is the language that they use in the state code, then you can't restrict the citing after February first, twenty twenty-two. So now is your chance, if you want to limit the locations. Otherwise, locations, it'll be, yeah, optional. Anywhere is how the language appears to read.
So can we limit, when you say size, can we say a minimum number of acres? Uh, or a number of animal units per acre?
Well, I meant site, the site, the location. I didn't say size, or meant, didn't mean to say size, sorry. So. Carl, and it would, it would default back to any language we currently have to regulate any of these types of uses, right? It depends on how you read the statute. I mean, it says if you want to restrict the site, the citing of these large CAFOs, you shall adopt an ordinance by no later than February first.
But in that ordinance, couldn't we say that they're approved, but ha- ha- it has to be a minimum in a certain zone and a minimum lot size?
Yes.
If, yeah, if you put that as part of the restrictions, yes. I, I, you can, yeah, you can definitely regulate it as long as it's not in conflict with state law.
That's how I see it, Scott.
Oh, uh, could we require them to have a quarter mile barrier around it? So it didn't affect neighbors? Could we, you know, some of those kind of things?
You could do certain things like that. Yeah, there's, there's not, um, it requires evaluation of a lot of different factors. And maybe you've gone over that, including distance from certain things, prevailing winds, topography. It does say a county may not designate a geographic area for the large CAFOs based solely on a uniform setback distance requirement from certain locations. Um, but that, let's see, that's like a residential zone, healthcare facility, public area and so forth. So you may, we'd have to look at it if you wanted to do a quarter mile from.
Residential area.
Nearest, nearest, uh.
Yeah. Well, I would like, I would like a quarter mile around their area to be clear that they'd have to own so that they could protect the neighbors against odors and flies and.
That's an interesting idea. So the property itself has to be at least half mile wide. Well, more than half mile wide.
A half mile plus whatever they use.
Well, that's what I see. If we had, if we had a minimum lot size, let's call it two hundred acres. And we say that in that two hundred acres, we have an offset where your feeding operations could be of a quarter mile. It has to be within that quarter mile radius.
Setback within the property.
Within the prop, so you just, so we create a setback, but we do it on that property.
Yeah. It does say universal setback, right?
Yeah, it does. It says ba- you cannot do it based on, based solely, that word slowly, on a uniform setback distance requirement from the locations described in subsection one AI, which is residential zone, healthcare facility, so on and so forth.
But if we don't do it solely on that, if we just say this is quarter mile anywhere, no matter where this is located, uh, you shall own the property within a quarter mile.
I think that works. Or if you want it to be a large enough parcel and say the actual facility has to be within, or a setback of so many feet or whatever.
That's how I see it. You have a minimum lot size of X number acres that you can't put any improvements closer than two hundred and fifty feet or five hundred feet to property.
Something like that.
I don't see this prohibiting that.
That creates your setback.
Right.
But with, in the setbacks within the property.
Well, so the way I see this, we wanna restrict the upper valley a hundred percent.
That's how I see it.
Is that how you see that, Har? Okay. Well, if we do that and we do, uh, uh, at the mouth of the canyon where you are, and that, that just leaves me. You're gonna crap on me. But that's okay. That's where I don't see, you know, if we put that out there where Randy's operation is, then Randy controls it.
He controls them. I mean, let's, let's be realistic here. We put, let's say we do a three hundred acre. Whatever, just tossing that out.
Yeah.
There's very few sites out west, other than what Mary owns, that are gonna qualify for three hundred acres. And if they do, they're not gonna be putting cows on it. They're gonna be putting homes on it.
That's right.
So it's, again, the market's gonna drive that factor. And I, but I don't think other than out west, you have any larger parcels over two fifty to three hundred that aren't controlled by Randy.
Not many.
I mean.
Not many.
It might be a couple.
Less than ten.
Yeah.
Maybe less than five.
Yeah, I mean, well, and the ones that you do have out there are now in the dairy business. The ones that control that acre even, but it's probably not contiguous. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure Gibson's have.
No, they've got four hundred and then they've got everything else is leased. So.
Did you talk about the planning commission's recommendations?
Not yet. So.
What is their recommendation, Scott?
So Western Weaver, they recommended that they only allow new large CAFOs in the E two and, um, M three, oh, sorry, A three and M three zones. So the far west.
They're protecting their existing CAFOs. That's a golden ticket, which I wanna, if we don't, we have any CAFOs, that's the first thing we need to know.
We do.
Are, they are?
Yeah, they, they definitely are gonna exceed those, to be a large CAFO, they would exceed those thresholds.
And, uh, are we viewing them as grandfathered in?
They would be, so they'd be legally non-conforming.
That's right.
If we did that.
That's why I view it.
They're not legally non-conforming.
Yeah. So they, that's what their recommendation was, to allow those to continue to operate legally non-conforming. But any new large CAFOs only permit them out, conditionally permit them out in the A three and M three zones.
Well, where would that be then? That would all be west.
Well, or it would be up east, far east.
So the AV three, nothing in the valley would be permitted because we're just talking agricultural three and mechanic or.
Oh.
Manufacturing.
Yeah.
That's Western Weaver.
Yeah, most of that's western. I think all of it's western, forty-seven hundred.
It is.
Or M three, which.
That's not, and this is the Western Weaver planning commission.
That's right. Ogden Valley will be hearing this in public tomorrow. But, uh, in work session, they've been okay with both of these scenarios. The first of which just says no new large CAFOs anywhere. Scenario two is what the Western Weaver Planning Commission had recommended.
Yeah, I wanted none, Gage.
Yeah.
That's how I feel about it.
But it sounds like we, it sounds like our direction has to be to put something into effect if we wanna restrict, put in the type of restrictions we just discussed.
Exactly.
So we could, is that right, Cartland?
It is. And I mean, this is gonna sound stupid, but you could enact whatever you want now and amend it later if you choose to. Because as long as you have something in the books by February first, it doesn't say you can't amend it later.
Well, and I'm hoping we can have some discussions with Sando and get counties in the second, first and second, take it out.
So I mean, yeah, you could even adopt a code saying one of these options right now. And if the bill changes things, you can do something different later. Or if the bill doesn't change anything, you can do something different later if you decide it's not what you wanted.
Especially, I just don't, the thing you've got me puzzled here is the fact that our two next biggest second class counties are electing to do nothing.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, it's kinda got me puzzled. I mean, they gotta have something they're thinking here.
Davis and Utah. They're not doing anything?
When we called them, they were like, you know, it's important, but it's not that important.
Hold on. Let, let me just, let me, my, my needs your reaction to your comment. It could be that they don't have in their existing commissions, they don't have the experience that we do. There's not, I know, I know the guys. They're not one of them. I'm, I'm all three, on, on both of those commissions that had any had experience whatsoever. Except for they've eaten a cow that roots Chris, but that's it. I'm just pretty savvy.
He knows what he's doing.
But I wouldn't, this, that could be, I'm just, listen, trying to give him the benefit of the doubt.
Or their ordinances as they exist today already has protection.
That's right. They had mentioned something that, Utah County, to be fair, they had indicated that they're aware that Sando's gonna be working on a modification to the, the debate on this timeline. And so they think they've got somewhere.
Well, are we too early? Should we just do nothing? And are we too early or is there somebody making application?
Don't have anybody making application.
Yeah.
Well. There's another option.
Wait till they make application?
That would wait. We won't be able to regulate this.
But that's, that's my.
Unless it extends, which we don't know.
If we have an ordinance in place now, then we're in control of where it goes and how it goes.
Right.
If they come in and make application after February first. Then, so February first is a week from tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're asking it to take, uh, to actually take action a week from tomorrow.
Right.
So does February first qualify?
It, it should because it says no later than February first.
Okay, alright.
The scenario, scenario two could do what you're looking for. We would just need to add in a buffer. We don't have that in scenario two.
Well, Mr. Chair, that's what I, to me, I think we need to take a stance here. I think, uh, we're better off to put some limitations on it. So at least we're in control, not somebody else that comes in tells us this is where we're going.
I'm right there.
So.
So let's just, between one and two, I mean, two is more flexible. Um, one, we just have a, a, a regulation outright that says no new CAFOs. And if you have one already, great.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Yeah.
That's.
Oh, we could do that?
That's option number one. Yep. Just no new CAFOs.
The problem is, is you just gave two golden tickets.
So what?
That's, to me, I don't like that.
Well, they've already got their golden ticket, but it's dirt, not cows.
Wouldn't they have it with option two as well?
Yeah. Well, it, it wouldn't be exclusive to them though. I think that's the concern about the golden ticket.
Yeah.
Like someone else could come in with, with option two and, and do it somewhere else. They don't have to take over by.
I kinda like what the planning commission's done here, but I think we need to put in a size requirement. And then, as Commissioner Jenkins said, some type of interior setback. However, that can be ordered.
Well, I'd tell you, I, I would tell you right now, I'd vote that fast on no new CAFOs.
Yeah.
Uh, option one, number one.
In this next two to one vote again. Of course, I'm used to it already today.
I don't think it's a golden ticket you're giving. They're already there. Their grandfather did, no matter what we did.
I agree. Well, I think, isn't that what we're saying? Only allow new large CAFOs in the A three and then, you know, A three or.
That, that's scenario.
Alma vault for number two.
Neither of these scenarios addresses one issue that we probably should address. Which is what happens when a non-conforming one expands. So they go from two thousand to twenty-five hundred. Cause technically, if it's legal and non-conforming, our non-conforming curve says they can't expand. So that would make them, not just non-conforming, it would make them illegal.
So what happens when you have a non-conforming, one's grandfathered in and they sell it? Could they sell it?
It would run with the land. If, if, if it was legally permitted in the first place, they could sell it and would run with the land.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the situation today. If we don't do anything, that exists.
Yes.
Also, no golden ticket there. It already exists.
Keep in mind, this is large CAFOs. We have to meet that threshold. You could still have a small dairy in, in these zones.
Sure.
Meet this large CAFO definition.
In the dairy business, they can't afford to do that anymore, Scott. That's why all the small dairies are bought up.
It's not just dairy.
Well, I don't think we have that much.
One surge.
Much to fear here. I mean, I just don't see, I, I, other than something going out potentially out west on Randy's property, which he's gonna be in control of, I just don't see it really taking place. But.
Well, you got Serge and you've got Hancock and you've got Dean, uh, Dean, uh, so, uh.
Martini.
Martini.
We got Ferbarils, you got Gibson's.
Yeah, then.
I guarantee you Ferbarils don't, they wanna sell their dirt and go to.
Yeah.
Midwest.
So if we brought option two to you guys with quarter mile setback, would that be favorable?
Yeah, I'd vote for that. I'd vote for one first, but two to one, you know how that goes.
I do.
Well, I'm okay with one and two. I don't think.
Well, you gotta pick one. Can't have two in there.
Well, then, one talks about the new CAFOs, two talks about the existing.
So two says only allow new CAFOs to locate in A three or M three.
Yeah.
And then existing large CAFOs that are not in A three or M three would be.
Yeah, I think both of those make sense.
Yeah, but one says no new CAFOs. And then you go to two and it says, well, only in these areas.
So you're, this says you're gonna allow the new ones, non-existent, in either an A three or M three.
Right.
And you could do that with just the constraints we just set. Existing ones, not located in, so that'd be the ones we just talked about. Not located in those zones may continue as separate non-conformant. I don't see a conflict between one and two.
Right.
Two just says you can have a new one in M three or A three.
Right. And one says you can't have a new.
No, yeah. Only, so the only new ones could go in those two zones.
No, one is, so you can't have a new.
Yeah. One is no new large CAFOs anywhere.
One puts a moratorium on them.
Are you, are you looking at one under scenario two or scenario?
Yeah, I'm looking at scenario one. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at scenario. I'm looking at scenario two.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. Scenario one, no new large CAFOs, but the existing ones can continue to operate non-conforming. Number two is saying if we have new large CAFOs, it's only in the A three, M three.
Yeah.
And the existing's gonna continue to operate non-conforming.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm talking about scenario two.
Yeah, that's right. See, and I thought about scenario one where it says, uh, is not permitted in any zone in uncorporated Weaver County. So period. That would do away with them. Couldn't have a new one.
But, but that's, that's gonna be in violation of state statute.
Not if we choose to enact that. And as long as we have the support for it, we can say we're not gonna allow any new CAFOs and new large CAFOs. And that is based on findings of, you know, the county's geography, population density. It's not feasible to allow any new large CAFOs. And the written language in here talks about that. So.
Well, and large CAFOs in dairy would be anything over seven hundred fifty.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. So he's telling them to dairy, you just can't go over seven hundred. They get seven hundred, they gotta move.
Yeah. If it's a large CAFO.
Yeah.
Which means there's no crop being grown there. There's no.
Crop, crop enough to sustain the existing operation.
Supplementally. Well, any crops, I mean, if any crops are actually grown on the facility, then it's not a CAFO.
The problem I have with scenario one, it's pretty difficult to say that we don't have existing, uh, and planned land, virtually no suitable locations, because we do have some suitable locations.
But they're all planned, right?
Those ones out there. Plan.
I mean, isn't that kind of what we're doing right now in our master plan?
Yeah. I, uh, I guess we could say that we've got the Western Reivers as a plan.
Yeah. But when we finish this at midsummer, it'll be done.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. So you, are you going for scenario one?
I am. I, I don't want any.
I can live with that.
Do you wanna see both options, uh, and, and debate it on Tuesday, or would you rather have one option?
Where are you, Har? Scenario two?
Scenario two is not bad. I, I just am done. I, you know, I think our county's now reached the point where we're done with. I, I just am done, I, you know, I think our county's now reached the point where we're done with large feed operations, new ones.
Uh, Brent Edwards on the planning commission made a really good point, you just said the market's probably going to dictate no new operations.
That's, that's the point. You're, you're exactly, these points are exactly right, you're exactly right, but I think for today, two's the best answer, that's why my vote's to go with two.
If we went with two, would you like us to put in a?
I don't really, well, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, if we look at you, cause you're gonna make that decision.
Your son, your one?
But there's nothing wrong with two, two works. Especially with the buffer, just got.
I'm okay with two with that we just mentioned, but I think we need to put in a minimum lot size. acreage. Yeah, I assume that.
If, if we do the quarter mile buffer, I think that'll dictate the lot size, so they have to have control over that quarter mile buffer. That'll be your half mile by half mile buffer, uh, that'll be what your lot size is.
Yeah, okay, and I'm comfortable with that.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's a long discussion to get there.
It was important one.
I don't know if you guys know, but your clocks are pulled off.
Yeah, we do know. Well, I would figure about nine, so yeah, we do know that. Flying along here, thanks, you guys. Item three, closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange and lease real property.
Okay, so.
So ma'am, you're gonna have to leave the room. I'm sorry.
Come back anytime, either virtually or live.
Yeah, but we anticipate our next session afterwards will be at two o'clock. Listen, though, just so you know, it doesn't bother us that you're sitting there listening to us.
You never thought you'd talk about animal feed operations in the county, did you? Who was, who was that girl?
All right.
What do we have here?
So, few things we're gonna talk about today, let me just finish questions, is that really quick, cause I can't do. High coordinated skill like this and also. So you got two sheets in front of you, one is the ARPA applications that the county received on its program totaling fifty, or ninety-nine point five million dollars. And then the second sheet is a proposed scoring sheet, I wanna walk through some of that. But in, if I could, just really quick, I'm gonna reach over and grab this mouse. Well, no, no, I know you can't. He's a, he's aware of. Ninety-nine.
Not quite double, but it's pretty darn close.
Well, and so, so there's a couple of things on here that we still need to consider, so, so those are some of the county projects that the county wants to fund. With our ARPA dollars.
So none of ours are here.
Some of them are here, and I'll show you which ones are and which ones aren't. Okay, but first off, I just wanna talk a little bit about what's happened in Fedland recently. So the federal government came out with a final set of rules for the ARPA program. So their interim financial rules were a hundred and fifty pages, and their final rules were four hundred and thirty pages. Their summary alone was forty-four. So it's, you can, Lynell can attest, it's a thrilling read. It's a, it's a big document, um, but there are some changes that I wanna point out to you that will help you as you consider what's going on. So this first slide, we'll just kinda, I stole these slides from Nico, there was no reason for me to build my own. There we go, okay, so remember how we talked about the different buckets, there were different things that you could use this money for, so one is revenue recovery. And had this crazy elaborate calculation, and when we ran through our calculation, we said we could get about thirteen million dollars. Well, in the meantime, they came out with this updated calculation and said, hey, if you wanna just take ten million dollars, you don't have to prove anything, you can just take ten million dollars. So seventy percent of all counties in the United States can take a hundred percent of their ARPA dollars under that provision. So that, so, and you can just basically spend it on any provision of government service, so anything that's legal that a government can do, you could just spend it on.
Well, we lose three million dollars if we did that.
Yes, but, so, there's a, there's caveat to that. We have so many demands for our ARPA dollars, sometimes it's better to have ARPA dollars as ARPA dollars, cause there's less restrictions on them in certain areas. If I were to take thirteen million dollars or ten million dollars of that ARPA. And replace my general fund revenue, then I have ten million or thirteen million dollars of general fund revenue, I have to stick in capital projects, cause I've got nowhere else to put it. Now I cannot use that on municipal services areas, I can't use it on water, I can't use it on sewer, I can't use it on incorporated roads. Because it's in the countywide levy, it has to follow that statute, so we may not want to put any money in the revenue recovery if we don't want it.
I was gonna say that I can take some benefits to that, too. And that is, uh, we have projects who've been trying to stack, or funds we haven't been able to, cause we haven't had enough cash. And this would, uh, allow us to have it unrestricted.
Yes, so, but, but as long as you are aware, that can't be used for municipal services.
But we can't do any municipal service.
You could move a building, you could build a jail, you could. Improve roads, you could fund IT infrastructure for the county.
The jail, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's what I'm saying, so this.
There is a, a good.
There's the other side of the coin, I agree.
Yeah, so there's a pro and con in this, and that's what I wanna point out to you, there's the pro and the con. If we want to use it as lost revenue, we wanna start using it now, we wanna start replacing our expenses now and do that as quickly as possible. So that we can have that money unrestricted in our capital projects fund, and we need to start reporting that now, cause right now, we haven't spent a penny, as, as far as what we've reported to the feds. We haven't spent a penny of our ARPA dollars, and they're not gonna give us our second tranche until we start spending our first tranche.
Do we start spending or spent at all?
They haven't said specifically. But they wanna know all of our planned expenditures, so if we have it all planned out, we have a better chance. But right now, we haven't spent anything, and we don't have an official plan for anything, so they're not gonna give us our second.
They just have to look at the plan.
Come on, don't panic, we knew we were gonna wait till right now.
We're, we're fine, I'm just telling.
We're fine.
Yeah, we're fine, we're not. There's other clarifications as to what we can use for capital projects, so this is where, if we wanted to use ARPA dollars for the jail, we run into problems. So it can be used, it basically says it can be used for new correctional facilities, it can't be used for new. Basically like apartments, I forget what their specific term is, let me pull it up really quick. Congregate facilities, which is anything with a congregate facilities. It's a place where persons reside and share common spaces with other residents, such as. Care facilities, assisted living jails, prisons, mental health facilities, it excludes hospitals and it excludes apartments. So we cannot use the money for that, we cannot use money for construction, new correctional facilities. Um, so there's, there's restrictions to that, if it's ARPA dollars.
We couldn't use anything for, uh, Andy.
No, you can't, you can't use Andy, Andy's, cause Andy's an apartment. Right, they're all individuals. We're okay on in.
It would fit under some of the stuff we're looking at for home, the homeless.
Yes, so Andy's project is good. So you have things that are allowable under one bucket that aren't allowed under another bucket, yeah. So as far as I can tell, the sheriff jail would not be allowable under any ARPA bucket, but if we used revenue recovery and beefed up our capital projects fund. Well, now we can use county dollars for whatever we want, as long as it's legal and lawful, and jail's legal and lawful. So that's, that's kinda where we have this game now, we need to start figuring out what we wanna do. So other things that are allowed is they've changed the water restriction, so it used to be it had to be clean water, drinking water eligible. Now it's broadened, so now we can use it for, um, more stormwater projects, we could use it to repair dams, we could use it to replace lead pipes. We can use it for potentially secondary water projects, as long as it frees up coronary water. Yeah, yes.
So secondary water is eligible or not?
As long as it. Coronary water supply, so if we say, and the argument from Taylor West, Taylor, what, what's?
Taylor West Weaver.
Taylor West Weaver is that it will allow us to stop using our coronary water to water sprinklerses, or, you know, to water the lawns, so it will improve our supply, so that. I wanna get Chris Crockett's opinion on that one, but there's an, an opening there at least, that we could potentially use it. And then broadband, it changed its definition for many, you know, an area without broadband was considered twenty-five megabits or less, well, now it's a hundred megabits or less, which would mean my house is in a. Broadband, you know, I live in the middle of Clinton, I have three internet providers, but I could say I don't have high-speed internet now, because nobody provides that speed. So basically, it means we have much more flexibility on broadband dollars, we can use a lot.
I see we have quite a few broadband requests here.
We do, so here's the, the new revenue, I won't worry too much about that, capital projects. If we want to use ARPA dollars for capital projects, we have to go through a calculation now to make sure that the project is proportional to the impact of the pandemic. Which means I can't build a new jail, so I can have a few extra spaces to house inmates for quarantine purposes. Cause that's not proportional to the impact, you know, I'm spending hundreds of millions of dollars to solve a five million dollar problem. And in fact, when we go through these capital projects, if it's over a million dollars, I have to explore at least two alternatives to the capital expenditure. And then justify why my project, that my capital project is better than the other two alternatives. Does that make sense? So there are some strings attached with these capital project dollars. But a lot of these water projects, I think, will be fine. Okay, next slide for some reason went blank, okay, here we go, here was just some examples of things that are ineligible, construction, new correctional facilities, new congregate facilities. Convention centers, stadiums, large capital projects intended to improve the general economy or economic development, we can't do that. I don't know if you have any specific questions on this, but I think, you know, the applications we put out are fine with this, you know, we're complying with all the restrictions. Water and sewer, I talked a little bit about some of those additional projects that are eligible, so covert repair, resizing, removing storm sewers or storm sewers. Stormwater infrastructure, safe drinking water dams, all these other sorts of things are now eligible that were not previously. Broadband, now it's a hundred megabits as opposed to the twenty-five, so. So we've got a little more flexibility, so if you remember commissioners, a little while ago, we put out an application on our website, we had. A whole bunch of people applied, that's the list you have in front of you.
See that, Gage? Where they get the information from, he's got it out of Nico.
Yeah, I.
As they should be involved in this.
Nico's involved, and so is the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and they're, they are both putting.
Did they put this full presentation?
They did, and this is just an extract of it, I pulled out seven slides of their fifty slides or how many.
At least there's some value there.
Yeah, there's some value. Well, Nico's always taken an active interest in broadband. You know, because of our rural counties, they, they've done a good job with that. And so did everybody on this list fill out one of these?
So, we, we sent an application to them. And this is our score sheet of that application.
Okay, this is your score sheet.
Yeah, this is what I wanna talk to you about now. And I will pull that up right here, so you can see it online, too. Okay, so what we've done is tried to take a WACOG approach, so. Here are some generic questions that we're going to go through, and we're going to score every single one of these projects according to these questions and these points that are here. And then, if you will flip, and you can get through the questions in just a second, but if you would flip to the back and look at the very last section called priority points. So we realized that there are going to be a lot of projects that are eligible. But we want you commissioners to be able to shape how this works, so as I envision it, we're trying to, we're, we're bowling, and we wanna make sure we don't hit a gutter ball and do something that violates the law. So we've set these boundaries to kinda put those little bumpers on, so we don't go into the gutter, but there's still a lot of flexibility with commissioners, what your priority is, and so. After we go through and rank these, we're going to bring them back to you and present them to you, and have you give them priority points. Where essentially you're giving thirty out of the hundred and fifty points that are possible, as what you feel is your priorities. Is it water and sewer, or is it broadband, or is it some healthy mix? And that way, you guys, basically, if these projects are eligible, you three together can essentially set your priorities, your rankings, and we. Wait them, so that will be really where the money ends up going.
So thirty of the hundreds comes from us?
Thirty of the hundred and fifty.
Of the hundred and fifty?
So what we're trying to do is basically weed out the projects that aren't really eligible, or don't really fall in what you've told us to do when we did our original application, and then. Any project that rises to that level of something we could fund, really, at that point, your thirty-point scores are gonna make the difference as to what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. So we're trying to do this similar to the way COG is in, we do the groundwork, we make sure all the projects are eligible, it's legal, it's lawful, and then. You guys will make your final selections.
Scott's point is he put out that of all the applications we've got so far, based on this, uh, summary of requests. Sixty-four percent so far are water and sewer.
Sixty-four percent are water and sewer.
Yeah, so.
See what the community's response is, is it, uh, up there on the page there, up here. That's so far what we've got as far as community response, you may see other areas in the community that may need to be ramped up a little bit. That didn't actually make an application, you, you're gonna have to consider, have we missed some section or some area of community? Or do we want to beef up that water and sewer? So that it's even a higher percentage or less of broadband, to Scott's point. Guide this committee on how you think. You think the, uh, turning sort of be. Even, those are just the applications. But do you think that we ought to provide a higher or lower dollar amount? In any of those two or three main areas that have come through.
Do you have a breakdown between the water and sewer, how much is water, how much is sewer?
Uh, no, I, I, we could go through and do that, but we, I didn't initially want to do my screening, because a lot of them hit both. So you'd have applications from the same person that's water and sewer.
So, so far, nothing to judge, your values reports, your studies reflects on this so far, yeah.
Correct, so we don't have the water study back, right?
We don't have the sewer back, do you?
Yeah, so here are what are provisionally, what I'm considering to be provisionally approved projects, so. The Western Weaver Lagoon, twelve million, now, I'm hoping we can get some money from the state, but right now, if we don't get another penny from the state, we're gonna be spending twelve million dollars on that project.
Go back one slide really quick, please. Twenty-six point nine, thank you.
Well, where'd you get, what's West Weaver Lagoons?
That's the sewer.
Project Imagine, or whoever's out at the mega site.
Why would we give ten cents, sir?
What's that?
Why would we give any money to that?
Well, we gotta prove to the state, we've got some type of, uh, sewer system before these companies come in and hook up, and then.
That's Randy's.
That was part of the incentive agreement that was promised to project.
He's gonna donate the ground.
No, the incentive agreement, uh, we, I agree with the incentive agreement, we said we'd provide it, it'd be provided, but that didn't mean we're providing it. You expect us to provide a sewer system for Randy?
Well, the, no, the, it'll be a county facility, because the county will own the, he's gonna donate the dirt, it'll be our facility. Well, we will own the facility, and he.
We build it, we pay for it, we operate.
Yeah, we operate, it's our facility.
First you've ever said that, that we would own it and operate, you said it would transition over there, uh, later on, and I expected that.
Can I jump?
Okay, this, this changes, say, okay, this is good to know.
Can I jump in here? I always assumed that that was the case, but under, uh, you would operate that. And then you were working on getting that with Central Weaver, putting it.
I'm still working that, but I, I never intended to give Randy or put twelve billion dollars into that.
Well, I don't know if it was twelve million, I thought we talked about eight million.
It's eight million plus, there's the two million dollars to get the. Up and running, so that, there's the two million.
In order for us to market the mega site, we have to have an operating lagoon system, operating system.
Of course, we do have one, it's, it's woefully inadequate, but we have one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can sell that to be an operated system.
So this is part of the offer letter to Imagine, right, was the.
Yes. And it kinda comes down to a time, a time constraint, um, if they wanted to, uh, come in, the sewer lagoon has to be built in the next eighteen months. So in order for us to, uh, apply to the state in the next sixty days. We'll have to be able to show that we can afford to build it, as well as that the county would, will be taking over that responsibility once it's built.
And we're also looking at state funds on this, too, Scott. And we're also looking at state funds on this too, Scott. So probably, this is what we've been talking to Stevenson about.
But probably helpful, this is the place marker, if it's helpful to you as a commissioner to say, do we want to have ARPA money assigned to this? Or shall we have other sources for that, for that to be paid for? You guys work through that and see where your comfort level is.
Right.
Well, and this is just on, I'm putting provisionally approved. I'm not trying to say that you've approved, we've not signed contracts for any of these things, but this is just as I've understood the conversations. We've potentially earmarked twelve million dollars for the lagoon. Another million dollars for Andy because we promised the state that we would kick in a million dollars of county ARPA if they were to fund her. So if that project goes through, then we're on hook for a million.
Can I stop for just a second?
Sure.
In the last few days, Randy and Scott Mendoza met with Montgomery. And tried to move that forward a little bit because it's kind of got stuck in some mud, the conversations did.
Right.
And they've now kind of lifted it out of the mud a little bit. There's now. A little bit of, uh, trying to get the zoning to work either on a sixty.
Sixty or forty-eight unit.
Forty-eight unit approach, but it's probably in that range right now is how the conversations went the last few days. So it is moving forward a little bit more positively than it was.
Yes.
So hopefully over the next short period of time, we have a little bit more good news with that. But right now, it's a little bit better than it was.
Making little progress.
Yeah. Just on that, based on their general plan for the area, their neighborhood plan, we found some information in there that helps Andy's case. And that's why it's, we feel like we've elevated this a little bit. Uh, before they were saying we would have to do a plan amendment and a rezone. Now it looks like we could just do a rezone with some justification in the existing plan. So Andy's going back to her people to talk to them and then we'll get back with Ogden City and hopefully move forward with rezon.
Good. So hopefully next month, we've got better news with that.
And then the CJC building, um, at the WACOG meeting, basically the commission is committed to be, I don't know if we said the last in, but if. If Rod can raise, was it one point five million dollars from all the other cities that the county would kick in a million of its ARPA to build that new building?
Yeah, we're last here.
Yeah. So so provisionally, we've spent fourteen million or allocated fourteen million of our ARPA. So that gives us thirty-six million dollars left. To fund any other county projects, assuming we don't get any money from the state. Now, that's, there's a lot of caveats. This is still up in the air. Other things that we have not considered, um, a treatment plant in the Ogden Valley. Medical jail wing, although I think that's ineligible broadband in the lower and upper valley. That's the Liberty Broadband or connects. If they get their grants, you know, we kind of committed to help them there.
We've heard nothing since the first of December on the national grant, federal grant that we applied for. So it's quiet for another month or two. And we'll see from there if we got anything at all on the ten, nine point eight million.
On the what?
Oh, Liberty Broadband.
Okay, I will.
We haven't heard anything on that?
Not since the first day of December. So that nine point eight million is still waiting to be decided. And if the next month or two week here, we'll bring you update on that.
Yep.
It's interesting though, because these other projects, I think you have several competitors in these areas.
Right, yes.
Now.
Go back, Scott. You let you jump off that so fast, I didn't have a chance to read it all.
So these two I've moved over because there I put those on the provision, so I can just pull those off here.
Okay.
And again, these are just placeholders, you know, twenty million dollar project with us putting in two and a half million dollars. All this could change depending on the study. So this is just.
Yeah, so there's no commitment to any of this.
No, so, but what I'm saying is, is there's another sixteen million dollars of projects that we've talked about that aren't on this external application list. So just because you see ninety-nine million here and I'm saying, well, we only have thirty million available, that's not counting other ideas that you guys come up with.
Right.
So what our plan is, at this point, this is what we're seeking your permission for. So these are federal dollars, so we have to be careful how we document our policies and our procedures. How we document our internal controls on how these things are going to be evaluated and scored. So what we would like permission to do is go through and have a team evaluate all these projects based off the criteria that you have in your hand. And come up with an initial ranking. And at that point, we would come back and present it to you and we would get. I'm hoping a cutoff and saying, well, look, these projects were really just not interested in funding. These projects were were interested in doing more detail and kind of like how Waik- or Waikong does the site visits. Um, we would do more detailed presentations, perhaps bring in the applicants and have them present to you. Answer questions and at that point, we would finalize our scores and turn it over to you guys and have you add your priority points to it as well. And we would fund, we would have the priority ranking. Now, that doesn't mean they get any funding. At that point, we can still go back and say, look, you asked for twenty million dollars, I'm only going to give you six. You know, so we still have the ability to negotiate there. But that's kind of where we want to be right now is get your permission to. Use this criteria and evaluate all these projects that we've received and come back to you with a preliminary score.
Do we have a clawback policy if we allocate them funds and they don't use it or they don't use all of it?
Yeah, so these are ARPA dollars, so there's a lot of strings attached to them. They have to spend it by obligated by twenty twenty-four and spend it by twenty twenty-six, actually cash out the door otherwise. And we're gonna have all these audit provisions included in there and reporting requirements. There's a lot of, a lot of work that we have to do to support these. So yes, we'll have an elaborate contract with anybody who gets funding.
What we tried to do is not promise anybody anything. And that's been the central focus.
Yeah.
We want to get that framework set up. How do you guys evaluate it? See if we're heading down the right path.
Well, even even these that you're mentioning here, there's no solid commitment.
Correct.
I make sure everybody that I talked to said, when I said, look, we can probably.
Yep.
There's nothing written in stone on any of it.
I just want to track all of it so that we don't forget anything.
I just wanted my fellow commissioners to know that I didn't commit any money firmly. Other than a, yeah, probably.
I didn't even go as far as, I went and say, we'll take a look at.
That's why. You're, well, so. To Andy, for example.
What's that?
Andy, Michael Law. I told her, I thought we could probably get her a million.
Yeah. And I think we did the same thing with CJC, even though Rod's kind of.
Right.
Yeah.
So if it gets seven fifty, that's what it gets.
I think that, I think that conversation with Rod, even though he forgets to mention it, is. We said that we would go up to a million dollars based upon this commitment we had from the cities.
Right.
And he, I think he conveniently, yeah, forgot to add that when he had the cities, but that was our, that was my last understanding of the CJC.
Well, I think Rod's understanding, I don't want to speak for him, but he's, if I get all this money, the one point five million dollars, the commissioners are giving me the extra million. That's the.
Well, maybe close to what Gates said.
Yeah.
That's pretty close to the same thing.
Yeah.
We just want to see the cities put some skin.
Yes.
And that's the thing I would say on this is if you look down to the project leverage. I, to me, that's a little bit light. One of the things that I've said to everybody that we want to, we want to participate. But we want to see some skin in the game from you. And so to me, that needs to be ranked a little heavier.
Okay, we can, um.
I don't know what, I mean, I, the more money they could put in them, that gives us the more money to use somewhere else.
I agree with that.
I could easily bump that up to fifteen points if you think that's appropriate and I'll just drop the bottom two questions down by two and a half points apiece.
I like that.
What are you talking?
So on the first page in the general section, the.
This front page?
Yes, front page. In the general section, one, two, three, four questions down where it says the project leverages other funding sources. I'm going to change that from being ten points to being fifteen points. And then I'm going to lower the last two items in that section down from seven point five points to five points each. You okay with that, commissioners?
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
So proposing to make the following adjustments to the score sheet under leverage, Mr. Fur wanted to bump that from ten points to fifteen and bump those two from seven and a half down to five.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we'll get that too.
Having that level playing field that everybody goes through commonly, it's a good way to give you feedback.
Yeah.
And we're hoping that that outline gives us something in common.
So do you see anything on here? Do you want to take a moment to look through these questions, the scoring and see if there's any other concerns that you have on it?
I've looked through them already.
Okay.
And I like what you've done here. There's a lot of time that's gone into this.
Yeah.
A lot of time, thought, energy. Once again, a brilliant job. Yeah, you've done a good job with that.
Everybody's been given feedback on it. So and we've run, uh, Lanell and I have run four or five applications through this scoring sheet, just provisionally to make sure we weren't missing anything. Um, I think it separates project out in my mind that met your priorities. So for example, you know, this is for generational infrastructure. We have some requests for exercise equipment. We have some requests for capital improvements to existing facilities that normally would have come out of their operating budget. And they're ranking low on this, whereas some of these projects that are new infrastructure, new water and sewer projects are ranking high. So as I understand your. Um, priorities, these are for generational projects and not just replacing current operating expenses.
Absolutely.
And so that, that, those, those are playing out when we're doing these score. So if you're okay with that, commissioners, then we'll, uh, use this as our sheet. Um.
Scoring sheet and get to work.
She can get to work on it.
Well, the nice thing about this, the one silver lining is, is you've got how many applications? You mean you don't have nine thousand six hundred and fifteen like you did before?
We don't. Thirty-eight applications plus whatever the county wants.
Yeah, but you get what I'm saying. How many did you have on the gears? There were hundreds. Yeah.
There was. Yeah, we were over a thousand. Yeah, over a thousand.
Yeah, this will, this will be.
And we, we envisioned this being similar to the not-for-profits. We're going to all look over them by category. We'll all come up with our own rankings. We'll sit down, we'll talk about it. We'll make sure that we're all on the same page.
When do you think you can reasonably have these scored and get these back to us? Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just keep jumping in.
When would you like us to have them back?
Well, three thirty, four o'clock. You know, I know it's gonna take some time. What were you thinking? You had to come in here with a predetermined idea.
So I'm thinking it's gonna take us a couple of weeks to get through, so.
So are you gonna do these individually? You're gonna look at their, what they've submitted, you know, maybe with a one-on-one?
So, so envision an RFP, so everybody's gonna take their proposals, they're gonna score them individually, we're gonna sit down together, we're gonna discuss our scores to make sure we didn't miss anything. We'll finalize that preliminary score and then we'll come back and present to you.
Got it. So you're not, you're not inviting these people in for a verbal presentation?
Not yet. So what we're gonna do at that point, we're gonna have the projects ranked and you guys are gonna look at it and you're gonna say, yeah, I want to further evaluate the top X. And that will then be where you guys are gonna get, because we don't want to see every presentation if it's no.
Well, you know, if I read down here, when I read through this, I, there's a lot of questions in my mind. For example. Uh, well, I looked at this one, Central Weaver Sewer Improvement District, ninety-one million, and that's at night freight removal. So I know exactly what that is. They want five million dollars from us.
Yeah.
Well, as I think about this, there's fifteen cities that sit around that table. We're one.
Yeah, yeah.
And of those, uh, I want to know how many have given any of their dollars in there.
Attaboy.
And so we're not.
That's the leverage part that I've.
Right.
That's why you changed the way to that question.
You've opened up the very issue that still hasn't been addressed around the table and that is, how do we communicate with the cities? To find out where they are and if there's good overlap, if there's projects that need to be co-opted amongst us all or at least with a few. We haven't quite got that piece of the puzzle to a point where we can give you some deep, good feedback.
Well, and I look at that one, Scott. I also look at your friends from Ogden City.
Yeah, ten million.
For ten million. They want us to fund, my question is, why do we fund an Ogden City pipeline?
Yeah. And they would argue that they're in the county just like everybody else is. But.
I don't disagree with that, but who, who pays those fees and where do they go?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say. Traditionally, this kind of stuff is done on user fees.
Exactly.
You know, so the people who use the system pay for the system.
Exactly.
And why should people in Plain City pay anything to Ogden City's water line?
Yeah.
Well, but if I was sitting on Bonavista's board, I could say, well, because Bonavista buys water from Ogden City. And wheels that throw our pipes to Plain City. So you do, in fact, get benefited from that.
Boy.
I know. It gets really complicated when you get into this kind of stuff.
Now you're getting soft on that, aren't you?
No, I just told you, there's a couple of ways to look at it.
Now, there's the, look at it from both ways.
So our hope is, at least my hope is to weed out half of these is just projects that aren't. Of sufficient priority for the commissioners to even consider funding further.
Yeah.
And then on the projects that are, we answer these questions. We actually have a presentation from the people who are asking for the money and ask these questions. And, and.
That's good.
Make adjustments.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, you know, for me to buy off on funding cities like Ogden City, I'm gonna pick on them. For water or in any other city, uh, before we fund some of these private companies. That, you know, don't have the resources that an Ogden City has, I'm gonna struggle with that. Okay, I need to clear, point of clarification here. So cities, uh, get some ARPA money, but districts do not, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Just to re, just to.
So the cities get about forty-three million dollars. About twenty-five is going to Ogden City and the rest is spread out. So about forty-three, they're, they're trying to decide what to do with that right now.
Ogden City is.
Well, all the cities.
Yeah, but Ogden, how much did they get?
Twenty-five, it's twenty-five million.
Yeah, so they get twenty-five million.
Yep. So they're all in that same mode of, the question is, do we want to joint venture with any of them on anything?
Well.
Or do you want to keep the county funds that you've got selective toward regional projects? These are all questions that you wrestle with.
We do. We need to kind of start looking at that.
Well, I think that's what we need to set down our policy that I've talked about for the last couple of times. We really need to sit down and say, look, before we pick any winners or losers. Let's decide on what our general principles are and policies. Do, you know, do we fund an Ogden City or other, and if so, what's our, kind of like we do with our TIF. You know, let's, let's set, you know, we're, we're gonna do a sixty percent. We'll set, we'll do a seventy percent match or whatever the case may be. Come up with that and then they can take it or lose it. I don't think it's us, us to say, look. Ogden City's our favorite. We're gonna give them ten million and we're gonna take somebody else out of the equation for that. I think we should evaluate them all on the same standard.
Doesn't though, with what I read in his questions, doesn't that do that? Part of what that does is, does it?
I, with, with this application? Yeah, I think it does. But, but I think it still comes up to us. Do we fund a Wolf Creek water over an Ogden City? And if so, you know, how do we differentiate the, the involvement? Or with Bonavista or somebody else?
Well, with the involvement, what's online today depends on just how nice some of the members of those water districts are to us.
Amen to that.
Okay.
Also, that means you better add another category.
No, but that, I'm with you. I think when you score them all out before you eliminate them.
Yeah.
My question would be, before you just eliminate them, let's see where they are and then you can kind of be ready for where we draw the line and then bump those in.
Well, and I think we have the opportunity here.
Yeah.
To come up with that.
There you go.
I think this gives us the time to have that discussion as far as with this thirty points right here, how we evaluate that.
Now, if you, if you want to have a written policy and procedure, I would actually recommend that we make that before we start scoring anything. Because I want to be, I don't want to be accused of writing a policy to make project X and project Y.
I need a scapegoat somewhere though, Scott. Come on, quit being so hard, Eddie.
So if you would like, we could draft a generic, but it's gonna be generic. I can make it based off of the application, do an initial draft, have attorneys look at it, but. I mean, what would you want me to put in there? I mean, really what we've said is, this is the only policy statement we have is the county stated intention is to spend its first tranche of ARPA funds. On infrastructure and other bricks and mortar projects that would not otherwise receive funding through existing sources. It is not intended to provide support for existing services or other ongoing programs.
Right. I like that.
I mean, that's our policy statement. That's the policy.
Yeah, I not that disagree with that.
So if we're okay with that, I mean, we actually put that wording in the priority points question. We'll score based off of that. And, and just bring it back to you for your review and. I, I mean, are you okay with that?
You know. One of the problems I'm having here, and this really goes to the very first question you asked right here. Does, uh, project qualify for ARPA funding? Well, I think we may, maybe ought to put one right below and say, does project qualify for Weaver County funding? Well, the reason I say that is because of the, based on that, some of these, I mean, we're all talking fairly strong in our positions here. Some of these, I don't think it even qualifies for us. For example, when you sit, look at some of these projects are just not, uh, they're not putting in a large. For example, when you sit, look at some of these projects are just not, they're not putting in a large enough amount, some of these others.
Well, and some of them don't really, in my mind, fit. So but who's gonna make that evaluation? Is this, I mean, what is a Weaver County qualified ARPA project? I mean, other than what I just read to you in that policy statement, what would you articulate? How would you tell me to evaluate that?
Well, that's kind of the question I'm having right now. I'm not sure I wouldn't mind that.
Well, and to your point, commissioners, you know, we talked about nonprofits. Should I, look right here, we've got two nonprofits that are listed here, and we've kind of talked about putting nonprofits on the back burner, not on the front burner.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and one of these I ran through, it's gonna score very low because like this, the equipment for the gym, it's capital equipment in their mind, but this is stuff that's paid for by user fees. I would see it as an ongoing program, not a new program.
That's what I looked.
I think our application already treats that properly.
You think you've addressed that?
Yeah, that was our intention of running these several through is to make sure that we sift out those. So those that don't really qualify are gonna rank low. And we'll come back and do a presentation on every individual project.
Well, I look here, here still sitting in the rec center.
Yeah.
Community building.
Yeah.
That's brick and mortar.
Yeah, that's brick and mortar.
It's brick and mortar, but it's gonna rank low because it doesn't really do, it's not new infrastructure. It's part of what they're, you know, it's an additional building. They said it would help seniors spread out for, you know, not getting COVID and stuff and having a spot to do it. But I would argue, according to the new ARPA regulations, that's not a proportionate expenditure for the impact. So it's going to rank really low.
So have you guys started reading these applications yet? Have you?
Yeah.
A few?
A few.
So are these one and two page applications or these thirty page?
Yes, there's. We've got law, we've got big detailed architectural evaluations and we've got a page and a half of.
Well, some would be more closer, closer ready to shovel ready than others.
Yeah, but remember when we submitted our applications, we had some good data on some and some other ones, we were just kinda, oh, I just put something down on paper. It was the same way.
Yeah.
We're seeing the same thing.
So who's on your committees to evaluate these?
So Brooke, Lynell and I are gonna do the initial review.
Okay.
And then we're gonna sit down and score them together. John and Sean have been invited to participate if they desire. I don't actually anticipate them doing a lot of this, but we'll present our application findings to them and then we'll discuss and come back and present.
Partially impartial. I'm okay with that. Are you, are you okay with that, Harv?
That's what we talked about before.
They are impartial. They trust these people very well.
They've done this before. They know what they're doing.
All right, I just wanna make sure we're all okay.
And if we find that some, there's some bias, we can always adjust the policy. We just have to be careful how we do it. We have to document it and make sure that it's fair and impartial. I mean, it's just a little more sticky with federal dollars, but we can still make adjustments if we need to.
Yeah, no, I get it. Okay. You're on the right track.
So we have a green light? Start reviewing thirty eight applications?
I think you got a green light for that. And I'm okay with this, but I don't wanna give the green light till tomorrow. Or have a chance to read and think about each one of those categories.
Yeah.
Only had this for a few minutes.
Questions.
Yeah.
The good thing is, is that we followed and mimicked a lot of what the state of Utah did.
Yeah.
And so that, the the presentation that they gave to the state of Utah, we've adopted a lot of that. And so you're gonna find a lot of similarities to the states, which gives us a little bit of a foundation to build off of.
Sure. Well, with my schedule and Lynell's schedule, I know that this week neither one of us are gonna have much time to dedicate towards ARPA, just trying to do our regular day job. So
Right.
it's probably gonna be next week before we even get into this. So if you want any, three of you commissioners, if you have feedback on these, please.
Yeah, I think it looks good, but I'd like to review these and.
Well, you know, when you sit and think about this in a quiet moment, you start thinking of the exceptions.
Sure.
These address the rules, the generalities, but
Yeah.
you you kind of wanna think about the exceptions a little to the wild. So that's all.
I'll update the scoring and send this to you electronically so you have the the latest and greatest version. And then if you just respond back with any comments.
Scott, Scott was really uncomfortable with a couple of weeks. I'm gonna be inclined to think it might take a month, month and a half to really get you into position to see the evaluation.
Right.
Get back and forth a little bit. So it'll probably be a month and a half.
So we're probably like in mid, mid March.
Month and a half?
To get through them, get with you, get back, evaluate some more.
I was thinking three weeks.
You'll hear back from us within three weeks, I would say, but then we'll probably have to do another round because we're gonna invite all these people in. I mean, this is gonna be a several month process
Yeah.
from from start to actually writing an agreement to fund.
So I'm gonna just be patient for a minute. We'll just, yeah, they'll probably take three weeks.
A minute. It ain't a minute. It's like a quarter of a year.
So we'll set the expectation of six weeks and we'll come in at three weeks and beat your expectation.
Great.
Okay, I'll send that out as soon as I can today.
Yeah, we haven't been in a rush so far. Let's not get, you know.
That's what I say. I don't wanna.
It's coming about.
It is. That's right.
It's going well. It's coming.
The twenty twenty four is coming soon.
Throw in the thought.
That's just gonna take a little bit of time.
You bet.
Okay.
All right, we're on schedule today.
You've got nine minutes. You can take a break.
Five minutes. Wow. We'll get to Sartre.
You bet.
Thanks.
All right.
Mr. Jenkins, you have just a second. I've got some information for you.
Okay, go ahead.
You wanna be an open.
Yeah, I don't mind if any people hear these couple of these.
You don't mind. I don't.
I don't.
It's up to you.
Okay, go ahead.
So did you see Gary's email with the cost estimate for?
Well, I did, but you know, for some reason I could not download that.
Okay, I got that here for you.
But I was gonna get it this morning when I got here, but I've been staying busy. I haven't had a chance.
That's it. Do you want Jared at the meeting tonight? He's willing to come and present.
Which meeting?
This is Central Weaver.
Central Weaver Sewer. Well, considering that I just got it. Are you kidding me?
Well, look, those are for lift stations for Central Weaver, I believe. Oh, no, no, sorry. Never mind. Yeah, we're looking somewhere between twenty five and thirty six million.
I don't know what to say about this.
That's on all stations. We heard you.
This is, yeah, this is on running that
line out west.
line out to the negative.
What bothers me here, I know, I wanna start just poking Jared in the eye here, but then I start and think, well, hold on now, would I do any better? Uh, the very first thing, Gage, is the contingency between the estimate thirty percent.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's like, come on, hell, you can't get closer than thirty percent.
That's a pretty high contingency.
Well, but then you think about it with everything happening the way it is right now, maybe that is the right contingency.
Is that on West Weaver Sewer?
The line. Here, so what's the difference between these two?
Wow.
Gravity to ninety three hundred west.
And once to eighty three hundred west.
See, so I, I'm not sure I understand what he's, of course, when the drawings, they'll probably show that.
Yeah, so if you want, if you wanna talk to Gary, he's available. But if you want Jared there tonight, he's willing to come. Gary just needs to know to call him. And then he'll show up. This is Gage.
Yeah.
Hello.
Considering I just got this.
You want me to have Gary pop up real quick?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna go use a restroom.
And like I do that too, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
So can I tell you something kind of amazing? Round funding this year, we have.
No, I haven't got this muted, so everybody's getting, okay.
We have almost six million dollars for round funding. We had, they divide that by three, so it's one, almost two million for majors and then they divide the four million by two.
I remember that.
If they funded every single project that was applied for, which they wouldn't, they would be able to fund everything except for sixty thousand dollars worth.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable. If they wanted to fund every single thing that was applied for, they'd only be short sixty thousand dollars, which is never, like, that's unbelievable.
That is wild. And so when Kevin, those guys said they wanna increase the funding.
There's just no reason. There's no reason. Especially because the taxpayers approve this. I mean, it's so great. You guys done for a minute?
Yeah, we are.
Do you want me to get that? It's probably.
Hi. What are you doing? Well, I've got a four minute break right now, so. Okay.
I see. So we can talk about it, what?
Them? You kidding me? Why would that be, Jay?
So suddenly start on a great year.
Yeah. Not too much controversy.
Lots, too much. Except for that they don't fund, I mean, they make sure the projects are done. Well, not everything will get funded.
Sure. Well, that's great. We have a little bit of extra.
Yeah, we could have extra pushed toward.
Just roll over, yeah. Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it's amazing. Like, the, when Rafa started, the goal was three million.
Everybody ran. He's on a phone call.
Yeah.
Out of the ARPA, but we got a good discussion.
Yeah, it went well.
Do we know when?
But we're gonna take a few weeks. Do our initial review over the next couple of months. We'll be back and forth between commissioners, back to applicants, get more information, settle the field.
Okay.
So.
Cool.
Yeah.
Cool. I've had lots of people ask. That's why I'm curious. Cause I'm just like, God, I'm not even on the selection committee. I have no idea. I sent them your direction. I don't know if anyone's called you.
I've had a few call.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so now I'm just telling them that. It'll be, we should have information in the first quarter for them.
Yeah.
So sometime in March, people should start hearing back if we need additional information or if they're just out of the running, we'll probably tell them that.
Do we have money in the bank today?
We have twenty five in the bank right now.
Okay, so we could start spending it.
We could, and we can't get our second tranche until we start spending that first tranche.
Okay.
So we wanna get some of this.
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
At least we got it to spend, right?
Right.
Good. I didn't know. I hadn't heard anything on it, so.
So lots of, lots of decisions they get to make.
Yeah. Very much.
So, so he, he wasn't able to download it for some reason, he said.
Oh, the estimate?
I just gave it to him right there.
Oh, good.
So he started looking at it and he's saying, wow, questions. I don't know. I said, you want Jared at the meeting?
Yeah.
And he's saying, I don't know. I, I wanna look at this, but I want Gary up here. I just have a couple of questions. So that's where we're at.
Happy, and and I'm pretty dang familiar with that. I've been through backwards and forwards with Jared already. So, yeah. All right, well, good. Well, yeah, I know Jared's kind of going to the same conference I am, so he was just wondering if we go to the meeting or not.
Oh, cause you guys are heading out.
Yeah, he was gonna go down tonight. I'm not leaving till tomorrow morning. And so he's anxious to get going, but he says, hey, he says, if they want me there, I'm happy to be there.
You guys are out the rest of the week, right?
Yeah. I should have told you that this morning.
You told me. I mean, I, I know.
Yeah.
It's on, I've got it.
But it's good practice to remind you, right? I don't like anything to be a surprise for you.
We've, we've talked about this.
Yeah. No, that's good. So, yeah, no, I don't like, I don't ever want you to be surprised by anything you're doing. I want you to know everything. Wow, you have a lot of folks listening in.
Yeah.
That's, wow.
Well, I'm standing in front of him right now. Let me ask you. You remember when you guys said, well, we'll start that process on twenty two hundred in Placid, do do that annexation for Placid?
Yes.
Whatever happened to that?
I just got it back from the surveyors a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, just got it back from the surveyors. So what does that mean?
So I've contacted right away agents so they can start reaching out to the folks.
Okay, so we've started that process. Uh huh. Yeah, he says that's starting right now, just right now. So they haven't actually started getting out and doing it yet, but we just got the information back and so in the next week or two, they'll probably start that and you'll probably start getting some calls. Okay? Thank you. You bet, John. Okay, bye. Okay. So, yeah, I tell you. You know how much confidence I have in Jared right now?
I have gotta guess.
Might have been a little bit. So he's done a study on this, this out there.
Yep.
And the very first thing I look at here is it shows the
Yeah.
It shows the flow of ninety three hundred going east.
Correct. So can I, can I borrow part of your study there and I'll show you?
Twelve men. It shows a ten inch gravity line going east.
Right.
Well, we've got a twelve inch gravity line going west.
Exactly. So what, and and let me, let me back up and explain a little bit what's going on. So the very first thing they looked at was just using a combination of gravity flow and lift stations, just pushing everything to the east.
Okay.
In looking at the number of lift stations that it would take, if you read the very beginning description of their, of their analysis, it says this was deemed infeasible. So no other work was put into this. In looking at sizing the line or anything of that nature, it's the bigger you go in sizing it from a ten to a twelve, the costs fill up. The number of lift stations go up.
Yeah, so.
Makes sense to do any more analysis. So they didn't even run a cost analysis on that because the other versions actually took less.
That's that one right there.
That's correct. So it's basically, it's the first worst case scenario of what the sewer design would be. Okay?
Okay.
Next case, if you look, if I remember right, it says from ninety three hundred to the east. Does that, and it's the.
Gravity from ninety three hundred west to ninety three, fifty nine hundred west to ninety three hundred west and force main to ninety three hundred west option.
Correct. Well, could I see the beginning of that study, Commissioner? So the next phase.
Okay, so this is gravity, everything going west.
And then force main from it from ninety three hundred west all the way.
The way back.
Right, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And that one was actually costed out and broken out in the very first cost analysis that they have here, which I'm holding on to, which is thirty one million dollars.
Right.
And then by the time you add in design and construction, it bumps it to thirty six million dollars. So that's the first option. The second option is going with that same fifty nine hundred west location, which is basically the top curve across the street from the dairy and gravity flowing to eighty three hundred instead of ninety three hundred. It stops it a little short, so there's a cost savings there associated with not going all the way to ninety three hundred. Now, both of these, Commissioner Harvey, you brought up a very good point that was been kicked around a lot. Contingency. Contingency was huge on this. And initially, we start out with contingency significantly lower than where it is now. Here's the problem we ran into. It's been Lance, not Lance, I did it again, Kevin. I, I keep calling Kevin Lance. Anyway, it's been Kevin's experience that when a study like this is done, it sits for a couple of years before anything happens. So the original estimate and the contingency assigned gets blown out of the water because costs are going up so fast as we're seeing today. We're seeing costs go up by the day.
Right. So when you say contingency, that's just a what if?
It's a, yes, it's a.
The price that we receive other than that is based on basically right now.
That's right. Today's bids that they, they've seen in recent bids. Contingency is.
I almost wish you hadn't have put contingency in there at all.
But the problem is you run into weird crap once you start.
You do.
And that's, that's what contingency covers, is the weird unknowns that nobody foresaw or planned.
You say crap because it's a sewer line?
I see crap because there's weird shit in the ground, Jim. That's really what it comes down to. So, um, so anyway, you've got the two scenarios. Both of them start at fifty nine hundred west by the dairy. One either goes to ninety three hundred, one stops a little short at eighty three hundred. And and then both of them have a force main that push it all the way back to the east to where the tie in place.
So it all goes down and then it all gets, then there's a solid line with just pumps they lift.
Correct. There was, there's a couple of lift stations to get it west on both of them. Correct, there was, there's a couple of lift stations to get it west on both of those, just because it's so flat, you just can't do it in one run. But the general flow of the ground topography wise, the high point is right there at fifty-nine hundred by the dairy. And, and generally it flows to the west, it's very slight, so they tried to use that to their advantage. Then when they decide to turn around and push it to the east, it's a force main which requires just the one pumping. Effort, not ballast station approach like getting gravity flowing it to the west does, does that make sense? And so those numbers are associated in these estimates, Commissioner. And then.
So the real estimate is, uh. Twenty-two million. Not the twenty-five.
That's to eighty-three, the other one is thirty-one. You should have, you've got two estimates there, one on each side.
Eighty-three and then.
Ninety-three, not thirty-one. You said thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thirty-one million to ninety-three hundred west.
Twenty-two billion to eighty-three.
Yes, exactly. And that doesn't account for design and construction, so the bottom number.
Yeah, but that's with the contingency in there.
It is.
Yes, that includes, so if you back out the.
That's right.
Yeah.
In Jared, design ten percent, construction management ten percent.
Which is pretty much the going rate we're seeing for that.
You got your work cut out for you, Mike, Commissioner?
I do.
So the question is, do you want Jared there for that?
I don't have either, Jared.
Happy to be there. I was.
Be honest, what?
So I was actually gonna have Chad go in my place tonight, Chad's just as familiar. Because I've got a conference I'm heading down to St. George for. But I'm happy to be there.
Well, Chad's okay.
To be honest.
I understand this, I think I pretty much got it.
So, so there's three options. One is the token crap option, which, no pun intended, but it, it's not the best option. The other two are really the two best options, and the reality of it is, it all depends on where we put that force main location at, if we put it at eighty-three hundred. It's less cost and puts some ownership on the industrial, industrial companies to get it to eighty-three hundred west. Which really is a lot less money for us, pays off in the end.
Well, there's, there's other changes here. That is ninety-three hundred, we just put a twelve inch line in there, so it has ability to pick up a lot.
That's right.
And secondly, all we gotta do is take one pump out and put another pump in and turn it.
Sure.
And, and they, we can pressure it.
You know this, you know this, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we could easily do that.
Yeah.
Well, no, that'd be maybe eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's fairly, yeah. Uh, there's, there's an extra cost, but it's, yeah.
Right.
Not huge, right, you're not building a whole bunch of stuff. The other estimates you put on here, Commissioner, just so you're aware, is the two lift stations involved with each of those force main options. And then the back of that is the O and M and the. I think there's three. No, there's two lift stations and the force main costs, and then the O and M is what it is. O and M is projected over.
So five hundred seventy thousand dollars and six hundred and thirty. So a million dollars for those two lift stations.
That's right, that's right.
Well, that'd be twelve, uh, one point two million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and each one of those requires servicing of the pumps, it requires paying for the power. Jetting stuff every so often.
In addition to the twenty-two million.
That's right, that's right, yeah, just because every so often, you get a residual buildup in there that you gotta run a jet down and, and clean it out towards operating at full capacity. So. Yeah. And the biggest thing we're running into, Commissioner, is the volatility of the bidding market. To be honest with you, I think, I think this ARPA money is only adding to the chaos.
I agree with that.
Because everyone's so booked up with work, that when they see this federal money, they go, oh, great, it's got federal streams attached with it, more inspection, more bureaucracy, and besides that, I'm already busy. I'm just gonna throw a ridiculous number at it, and that's what my bid is. And we, we've seen that.
And sometimes they get it.
You're exactly right, Commissioner, it, we're, yeah, it's. Yeah.
So you've got the two lift stations there.
Two lift stations and then I believe it's the force main, is it, is it not?
I don't understand this.
I should have.
O and M costs. A lift station at eighty-three hundred.
Yep.
So you're saying that lift station at eighty-three hundred is four and a half million dollars? For a frickin' lift station? Come on, Gary?
I'm not saying that, that's what Jared's saying, based off the costs they're saying.
Five, you an alternative?
Hold on, I'm pulling this up.
How could that one be so much more than the other two?
I think that's the force main though. I think that's the force main, not so much the lift station, the force mains are a little bit more. Expensive, just based on, oh, it won't freaking download. Sorry, I didn't know that's what we were discussing.
Well, hold on, you tell me what that is right there, what is that right there, the four point three million?
Yeah, that's the eighty-three hundred lift. O and M. So. Is there another sheet missing?
Do. Those are the two on the overall bid.
So we've got. Oh, that's probably lifting it from eighty-three hundred out to ninety-three hundred. Yep, that's what it is, okay, so if we put the force main at ninety-three hundred, it's still gotta get from eighty-three hundred out to ninety-three hundred. So that's what that's gotta be, is the four point three million dollars to get that, think about it, though. You've got. Everything contributing into it up to there. Plus you've got the heavy industry effluent into it as well, too. So you're lifting.
Where?
What? So, from eighty-three hundred to ninety-three hundred.
Okay.
So you've got, you've got the combined collection of effluent from, from there all the way east where this starts. Plus, you've got the heavy industry effluent discharge, we're guessing it's the vinegar plant, if that's who it is, a million gallons a day of discharge as well, too. That you have to lift to get even further west before it hits the force main, pushes it back east. So that's why you're seeing four point three. Yeah, it's a big jump. It's a big jump.
I don't understand where you're going here, Gary. Four point three to do what?
To push it further out to eighty, to ninety-three hundred? So it's interned, then force mained, all the way back.
From ninety-three hundred?
All the way back to forty-one hundred west.
Okay, and. What is four and a half million get me in there?
So that's covering.
Covering what?
All of this here, so you've got your, you've got your excavation, your construction, pumps, building, your generator on site. Everything associated with it.
So it's an additional charge from eighty-three hundred to ninety-three?
That's right.
So to pump it?
So you've basi, you've basically got three different lift stations.
I know, and I just, he's wrong on that, he's done that wrong. Well, I understand what you're saying, but boy, why would do that is beyond me.
Well, and that's why we figure the eighty-three hundred is really the best option.
That's right.
Because that eliminates the need for that third lift station to get it out, just to turn around and push it back to the east.
Why, why would you even consider going, doing that?
Well, it doesn't, it, it does make it cheaper for the industries out there at ninety-three hundred.
Well, from what he shows on here. Uh. A sixty-seven hundred west, that'll flow all the way west to eighty-three hundred, he's got two ten inch lines there to flow west.
Two, so sixty-seven hundred to eighty-three.
Well, that shows, that shows a flow from fifty-nine hundred all the way west.
Hmm.
Gravity flow. You got a ten and a ten and a ten and the fourth main going back, so from fifty-nine hundred west. That goes west all the way to eighty-three hundred.
To eighty-three hundred, yeah.
Right.
He says this option makes use of the natural slope of the land. And two intermediate lift stations would be required to move sewer west from fifty-nine hundred west to eighty-three hundred. And then from eighty-three out to ninety-three, if we go that far with it.
And you know, we have Brian waiting for us here.
Brian. Oh, we do, I'm sorry. You're out of time, you're, yeah, I let you jump in here and it shouldn't have.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, do you want Jared there tonight?
No, but I want Chad.
Do you want me there?
No, you don't have to, you gotta go, go. Give me my papers.
You gotta.
Where are you doing this presentation?
Central Weaver's.
Board, board.
Yeah, board, I'll be there.
Are you sure, Commissioner?
I just said, guys, work cut out.
About as clear as mud. Some of this, you know.
Well, do you want me to plan on being there?
No, I don't. Uh, I'll call Kevin when I get out of here and we'll make some decisions.
Okay.
I need somebody there.
Jared, talk through this with Kevin.
Yep.
So Kevin should be familiar.
Kevin's, Kevin's been back and forth with it like I have with him, so.
All right, all right.
You good, I'll get out of here?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Brian, you there?
Here, Commissioner.
Yep.
I'm sorry for, I let Gary slide in here and I. I just had to have some information for a meeting tonight, so I'm sorry for disrupting, taking fifteen minutes of your time.
Oh, no worries, I always appreciate a good sewer discussion.
Yeah. All right, bud, go ahead, you're up.
Well, in fact, maybe I'll lead off with that today, I've been looking at some sewage data myself. Kind of, kind of one of the big questions that we're starting to hear is, have we hit the peak of the Omicron variant yet? We're looking at a couple of indicators to help us kind of understand where we're at. One of those indicators is the, the COVID sampling that's taking place out at Central Weaver Sewer District and also at North Davis Sewer District with their proximity to us. Um, and what we're seeing with their data, now, this is, it's kind of new research, it's been developed over the last year and a half. It gives us a way to kind of.
I'm amazed you're doing that, Brian. Well, I'm not taking the sample, I didn't realize we were doing it yet.
Ah, and what we're seeing kind of in the viral load in the sewage is that we may be starting to plateau. Um, it's a little early in the data, just to really call it a trend yet. But we feel like with what we're experiencing at both of those sewer treatment plants, we may be starting to hit that. That plateau for the Omicron wave, now, with that sewer data, another thing we're looking at is. The timeframe for other areas like New York City and New Jersey. Uh, and other cities on the East Coast and their Omicron experience. Where they have already started on a downward trend with their Omicron infections. And we're seeing that it's about a four to four and a half week timeframe for a lot of areas. Where they, they have the, the rapid Omicron growth and then it starts to taper off. As we look at our data, we're kind of hitting about that four week timeframe right now, so if, we kind of feel like our real. Omicron uptake started around December twenty-eighth. That's about four weeks ago, and if we, if we kind of trend similar to what those other areas are experiencing, then maybe we are. At. At or approaching the, the peak of our Omicron infections, I, I hope so, the last two weeks have been a crazy ride. So we, we'll hope we follow those similar trends, but we'll watch that closely. Um, just kind of with that discussion and hopefully answering, you know, that thought of, of where we may be with our Omicron infections. We are reporting now sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen total cases of, of COVID. Last week I didn't get to update you because of the holiday, so some of our numbers here are gonna be over two weeks. That's ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-five cases that we added over the last two weeks. Now, before Omicron, when we were talking about the Delta. Variant back in October, September and October, we were adding, you know, like a thousand. Two hundred cases a week, just to give you some perspective, how many cases we've added. And with that, I usually report to you our seven day average. Our seven day average right now is seven hundred and eighty new cases a day. And just again, for perspective, back in October, our seven day average was in the one hundred and fifties cases new days, so just a, a lot of infections out there happening. In our community, and, and we've seen the impact it's having. Um, I, on Burke Forest, I know at the Health Department, for the last two weeks, we've been down about twenty-five to thirty percent of our staff. We're hearing from small business where, that they can't, they, they don't have enough staff to operate, in some places they've elected to close. And with our schools, we've, we've seen a lot of struggles with the staffing at schooling as well as kids being out of class because they're, they're sick as well, so kind of an interesting. Experience we've had with this variant, uh, and as we watch it grow, active cases in our.
You feel like we're beginning to peak?
Well, that's kind of what I was explaining with the sewage data and the. And the behavior in other areas, we're right at that timeframe where it wouldn't be unreasonable to ex, to suspect that we are starting to see that peak, or, or it's, it's close by.
That's what we were talking about, but I got no commitment out of him, that was why, that was what I was looking for is the.
I can't predict the future, Commissioner.
I know.
I can, I can talk about trends in data.
What's happening to our emergency rooms, our ICUs?
Biddles are actually kind of interesting, I'm gonna, if I can share my screen with you real quick, I'll share the hospital graph with you. We've been watching that closely, can you see this blue and orange graph? Blue and pink. Um, so this is, this graph indicates our hospital usage, blue color is, uh, non ICU beds. The orange color is ICU beds, and what we've been seeing is more hospitalizations with the Omicron variant, but fewer. In the ICU. That ICU numbers dropped down to around fifteen to seventeen on average for the last couple of weeks. But our, uh, non ICU beds are, are averaging in the sixties, uh, which is a little bit higher than what we were seeing. Uh, in, in the first part of January through December, so. Hospital wise, again, we're still, still impacting them with a lot of cases, but they, uh, it's a shift in what the hospitalizations look like. And an interesting statistic is, these hospitalizations right now, eighty-one percent of those are in unvaccinated people.
Eighty-one percent?
One percent of the hospitalizations, our hospitalizations are in unvaccinated residents, um, so. You know, the vaccinations have their benefits for, for the individual, but there's also a community benefit to them, um, and we are, we are finding the data in. In, uh, what we're experiencing to be able to demonstrate that, that the vaccinations does, does have a good impact. Seeing the disease burden on our community. If we look at our schools. There, we've had some really interesting things happen in the last two weeks with our schools, the governor's office, working with the legislative leadership. And the state school board. Uh, paused the test to stay protocols, uh, because we exceeded our ability to conduct the test to stay events at the schools. That pause.
Oh, gee.
They gave the schools the ability to. To identify four virtual class days that they could hold, uh, either at an individual school or district wide. To try and, uh, get their case numbers out of control or under control. And the schools have really been struggling, not just with kids having COVID, but the, the staff being out with COVID as well. Ogden School District. Uh, opted to go to a four day, uh, reset. Or, or a five day reset, so they held virtual classes on Friday. Went through this weekend, virtual classes today. Tomorrow their elementary school will be back in person. On Wednesday, junior high and high schools will go back in person, and, and they've done that because of, of their staffing shortage. Um, and, and the cases they're seeing at their schools, and hopefully that will help them out with their cases. And have a reset in Weaver School District, they've taken a little bit of different, different approach. And they've just gone virtual on the schools that exceeded, had exceeded those, uh, test to stay thresholds that had been identified. They've currently got, uh, two junior highs that are on virtual learning. Um, and one high school, and then it looks like we've got four. Charter schools that are also in virtual learning because of their case numbers. At our school.
Is the high school Fremont?
Fremont was struggling and we were going to have to do a test to stay event.
Right.
Uh, at Fremont, right before Martin Luther King Day, so, um, what helped them is the long weekend. They, uh, we had the test to stay pause, so we didn't ever do a testing event. They had the long weekend, uh, with kids out of school, there was a, there was a teacher workday on the Friday, I think, and then the Monday off is the holidays, so they had. Almost five days off through that holiday weekend to help them get their case numbers back down.
No kidding, all they're doing, so who's the, who's the high school now then?
What's that?
Who's the high school?
Roy High School has had a lot of cases as well.
Okay.
Roy Junior High and, uh, Sandridge are also in. Roy. We're averaging about eight cases right now at each school, uh, but some of them are, are quite a bit higher. Uh, but some of them are, are quite a bit higher. We've got seven hundred and sixty-seven cases in our school right now. And that's, you know, back in, uh, October, November, we were like two hundred cases. Three hundred cases. And we're up to seven hundred and sixty-seven in, in the schools right now. Six hundred and fourteen of those are students, a hundred and fifty-three of those are staff. And I think that's really where their schools, the schools are suffering is with the number of staff they have out sick at the moment. So. Um, uh, some new legislation passed today, uh, affecting the schools and the test to stay protocols. Uh, so really over the next couple of weeks, we'll be working, the Health Department will be working with the school districts and the, and the charter schools to help them understand that new legislation and how we work through, uh, outbreaks at their schools and, and try to keep those in check in the future. It'll be a little bit of different, uh, different approach than what's we have had up to this point in the school year. And I think is my report, maybe real quick, I can tell you some, uh, vaccination numbers. If we look at our community, all we have sixty-eight percent. Sorry, I'm trying to find the right, right screen to look at here. Sixty-eight percent of our, of our population having received at least one, one dose of the, of the COVID vaccination. So we're at growth in our vaccinations is slow. Uh, we, you know, we're hope, we hope we'd be having more uptake than we are, but it was, you are still kind of chugging along and getting more people vaccinated. We held a vaccination here clinic here at the Health Department last, uh, a week ago Saturday, focusing on pediatric vaccinations. And we had a real good turnout there, over, over two hundred vaccinations administered that day uh, to, to our pediatric age, age kids. Uh, I was here for a little while and saw a couple of Weaver, Weaver County employees there with their kids. So it's good, good to see that happening. With that, that's my update.
Good questions?
No, I appreciate what he's done. He's done, let's do this. We're doing good. Our health department's very good.
We are. So I have a question I've been dying to ask you, Brian, so I'm gonna. Uh, I was watching a program on TV the other day and it talked about, uh, uh, the criteria to get, uh, serviced on some of these. And they mentioned the state of Utah and how we're allowing race to become in our, uh, in our scoring to who they give preference. Is Weaver County, have you received any of that? Do you? I, is this a, a policy or a scoring that's come down from the state? Is this something we do on our own? Do you have any idea how that goes?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think what you're asking about is access to the monoclonal antibody treatments.
Uh, that's right.
They're in real limited supply right now. So the state Health Department has, uh, they receive those treatments and then they, uh, allocate them out to the area hospitals or the places that, uh, that are approved to administer those treatments uh, based on what they receive. So we're starting out with a very limited supply. And then to, to make it, uh, an even more difficult issue, two of the three treatments aren't very effective against, against the Omicron variant. So it's a small number of treatments that are available with a high demand. The state has been trying to, uh, develop a way to best prioritize who would have access to these treatments, um, in that situation. And the discussion has gone, uh, 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 around a lot of things, pre-existing health conditions, age, race, uh, and, and other factors that are, they're trying to iron out to, to best prioritize who gets these treatments when they're available.
So answer my question now. Does the state recommend that scoring system to us? And do we use it? Do we take that into effect, somebody's race before we treat them?
This, so the state, state develops a scoring system and it's actually outside of the local health department's control. Uh, because all of the, all of the medication is allocated to the state. And then the state allocates it out to the healthcare providers that administer the, the medication.
So your answer is yes, we do use it, but we have to.
Dictate.
Right?
Ask, ask me that again, please.
So your answer is yes, we do use it, but we have to because it's dictated by the state.
Yes. Um, so it, it is being used by the state for allocation and it, the guidance has changed. Um, it, you know, it's, it's been developed and is as things go by, uh, you know, whatever it's, it's influence and change. I, I know, Commissioner, I'm trying to give you a good, a good thoughtful, you know, uh, complete answer, but, uh, it, it if really the short, short answer is it's a local health department doesn't have any, any involvement in administration of those medications, nor do we have if involvement in determining how they're prioritized. That's all.
That's what I wanted to hear. Okay. Secondly, uh, you know, I, uh, I read an article in the Epic Times over the weekend. And it really opened my eyes on these, uh, these treatments. I, I, I guess, I don't know if they're called monoclo, monocloid, cloid treatments or, or what they are, but you know, uh, specifically it had to do with these, uh, these horse pills that they laugh about. And the FDA said not to use, you know what I mean? Well, it was interesting in the article. Uh, the first, it, it showed a couple of people here. And the first one was, uh, at the Mayo Clinic. And this guy had been on a ventilator for twenty-one days. And they felt like he had less than a five percent chance of surviving it. Uh, that he was gonna die. They checked him off. And, uh, the family said, well, okay, we want to check him out. We're gonna do something else. We wanted to try him on some of these other treatments. And they said, no, in the, if he's in our care, we won't allow you to do that because they haven't been FDA approved. And they said, we understand that. We'll take him out of your care. They said, no, we won't allow, allow him to be released because he'll die for sure if we release him. And, uh, anyway, in the end, he ended up dying anyway.
Yeah.
And the second case was one at another hospital. It was Christian Memorial or something like that. And they weren't very happy. They were really upset with these people, but they eventually allowed this guy to check his, uh, or his wife to check her husband out. Because he was, he was gonna die too.
Put him on the pill?
Uh, and they put him on a pill and it took five or six days and all been dang. They started to recover and he eventually come back. And he survived. And of course, that was the purpose of the article, right? Is to show that there is no for sure treatment here. But under the circumstances, some of these institutions aren't giving you any choice.
You gotta have choice.
Yeah. Are you, what are you seeing there, Brian? Do you, you even get involved in any of that stuff from a, uh, from a, uh, health department point of view?
We don't. Commissioner, that's kind of outside the purview of public.
Yeah, that's really between them and their doctors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my quick, short answer.
Okay. Well, and I understand that. I'm not sure you did get a, a chance. So, uh, normally we don't go to questions here, Brian, but I see Tim Vandennack on the phone or on the call here and I'm gonna ask him if he's got any questions for you because he'll probably print something on this. Tim, you got any questions for, uh, Brian?
Um, me on the spot. Let me think. He's kind of covered. Um, that, that I guess you, you mentioned that, uh, the sewage, testing of the sewage. What, what did, can you talk about that? What did that show? That, that testing?
So that's some new technology, uh, Tim, where they're actually testing our waste. And you can tell from a large area if Omicron is still around or not. How long they've been doing that, Brian? Did you say?
Uh, it's been in development since the beginning of the pandemic. So of almost two years now. Um, and really, you know, and it, I think some aspects of the science are pretty sound in the data that they're collecting, but there's also some, some continuing learning of, of trying to understand how the trends really reflect what's happening in community.
How long you've been doing it?
Well, I, we're not doing it at the Health Department. The state's doing, we're just, we're just reported their data.
Oh, their data. Okay.
I thought that was Weaver County.
That data is available on, uh, the state's coronavirus dashboard. Uh, and it's, it's, uh, the data sets are set in each, uh, by each sewer district that they're sampling.
All right. Okay. So if that's it for you, Tim, we don't have any questions. Thanks, Brian. We appreciate your report.
Welcome.
It's not a great report, but it's not a terrible one. It could be worse.
Going to take that as a reflection on the data and not my ability to give a report.
Yes, that is a reflection on the data, not on you. Any questions?
No, you start, Brian, you're, once again, fantastic job presenting the data.
I got one question for Brian though.
Okay, hold on.
Hold on, Brian.
Commissioner, uh, Flores got a question. Go ahead.
So I'm going back to your graph that you showed us. And it looked to me like, uh, if you go back to December first is about when this Omicron started increasing. And assuming that that this isn't a plateau, I'm not going to commit you to that, but let's say it is a plateau at this point in time. How do you, what do you anticipate that the period of time before we get back to maybe that December first level on the far left side of that chart? In other words, uh, if we're plateauing and heading down, is this a, is this a month, two month, three month timeframe?
That's, that's a good question and kind of hard to predict. Um, I'm, there's a couple of studies that have looked at how infectious it is as, as a virus and it, they've assigned it roughly an R value of ten, which, which kind of loosely transmitted, uh, translated, sorry, means, uh, for every one positive case, you can expect ten more additional cases. Uh, the, the most infectious disease we have, uh, is measles and that's, that's, uh, given an R value of about thirteen. Um, and the, the original virus and the Delta variant had an R value of around six to seven in some studies. So just to give you an idea of how transmissible the Omicron variant has been. Um, I think we can expect since it's taken us about four weeks, four and a half weeks to get to the point where we're at. And if, if this is where we start to plateau, uh, and then decline, we can expect that it's gonna, going to take at least that long for us to get back to what our previous numbers were. So at least another four weeks, four to six weeks were, were. So if on a downward trend to get back to those numbers, we had in the middle of December.
So it's safe to say we're looking at first of mid-March at the best?
I think so. I, I think that would be a good estimate, uh, based on, on the information we have.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome. Thanks, Commissioners.
Uh huh. Talk to you later. All right.
We have Rick here with us.
Yeah, I've got Rick. So Rick, not too far behind, actually did good. All right, you're up. Talk to us about. Here they come.
Everybody's coming in.
We were just standing outside waiting for you guys.
Yeah, it's okay.
How are you doing?
Good. Good to have you all here. All right. Charlie, you gonna lead this discussion?
Uh, yeah, actually I was, uh, wondering if Dave wanted to lead out and we can dive in.
Okay, go ahead, Dave. Uh, we just, so Dave will only introduce. And Dave, who you got with you?
Jim Flash from Hanson.
You bet, Jim. Glad to have you here.
Yeah.
Of course, everybody else we know. You know, everybody. You okay?
Not well, but I know.
Okay.
See.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, we appreciate you having us back on. Um, we wanted to, come back and kind of answer some of the questions Commissioner Crowe had at the uh, county council meeting. And to show you essentially the site plan as well that you've talked about. It's still very conceptual in nature, but, um, it's, it's what we're kind of working towards. If you remember, one of the big issues was developing in that tree line area.
Oh, I know where we are.
Yeah.
The, uh, wet or the.
Yeah, floodplain.
Floodplain, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know if you know Charlie, it's still preliminary, the floodplain. Um, I don't know when they'll official, make it official.
My understanding is that people have filed protests. There's a few protests out there, including Marriott Sladeville, um.
Oh, they got hammered on the floodplain.
Much of their cities.
Much of their city.
Yeah.
Those stupid areas like that one, like the, uh, exit where you get off, uh, in Marriott Sladeville off five fifteen right there. When you go west, there's a spot there with a ditch going through. Well, they've had that almost that whole area under a floodplain. It was ridiculous.
All right. Anyway, Dave, go ahead.
So, yeah. Um, you know, and prior to that, the January fourth meeting, we had actually made, been made aware of the floodplain. And, and as Charlie mentioned, we put in the zone development agreement, something that would allow us to pull out of the, that floodplain if that ended up being the case. Um, basically clustering the existing density that we would have gotten out of there on the remaining, uh, portion of the property. And so, but you know, obviously that meeting was highly intense on the floodplain. And I know Marriott Sladeville, regardless of any disputes, they don't want us developing in there because they feel like that's the floodplain. And so, you know, we don't want to take too heavy of a path. So we, uh, we pulled everything out on the floodplain and have a site plan to show you for that.
What is that red you're messing around with right now?
I was just drawing in the, uh, approximate location of the existing floodplain. Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm erasing it because I didn't get it far enough to be.
Well, yeah, I thought the floodplain pretty much, the new one, I thought it followed that tree line pretty much.
So, yeah, new one versus existing.
The old one I never did really see.
The old one comes in.
It's, yeah, it's quite a bit closer to the river.
Is it?
Um, yeah, it's more like, it kind of comes down like this.
Maybe by that road would really have been a parallel.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that.
Um, yeah. And then the, uh, so. Something like that.
Yeah.
Going off a memory.
Yeah. Uh, anyways, if, you know, pulling, pulling everything out, here's the kind of what we've drawn up, trying to retain the densities that we had prior to that. Um, and that's kind of what we come up with. One of the zone development agreement, uh, items was to have the commercial along the front with the multifamily above to be at least sixty percent of 12th Street. And so that's, that's what you see those ads are. Um, you start from the corner of twenty-eight hundred West and 12th Street. That will all be commercial footage, um, all the way over until where that white, uh, kind of erased area.
Wow.
Zoning in this area?
Right now it's a, well, a two right now.
Oh, one acre lots.
Yeah.
Um, the planning commission back in July had approved the unanimous, obviously a little different than what we see here because we weren't intending the floodplain to be so big. Um, the yellow area I have highlighted there will stay commercial. Um, and if you see it kind of bordering the tree line up on the north side, those are townhomes. And we've had to kind of work with the transmission power lines that you see there. That's kind of how we've been situated.
That's the corridor?
A little further to the left. Uh, there's a kind of a purple line.
Right here, right?
Oh, right there. I see it.
Yeah.
Like I say, you can't go underneath that, right?
Yeah, we've got to keep it fairly well open space underneath it, but parking lots and.
That's your power line?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, one of the things to consider, it doesn't show here, but we are aware of it, is providing access to the back portion of the hammer and the linched properties. Um, which I actually met with them about two hours ago, just to confirm more with them. But it doesn't show it on this plan, but more than likely where that power line comes over, we would have it provide a stub road if, if this were the final concept plan or site plan. Um, and, uh, talk to them about, you know, the zoning that they could get and how it would affect their property values. And, and they're on board with it. And we're gonna, we are going to draw them up. Um, a concept plan for their two acres that they would eventually be able to bring into the subdivision. So, uh, I guess our, our goal to come here was to, to show you this, see what opinions you had, what comments you had. Um, also, we have some other questions to answer that, that they had at the, or the Commissioner Fowler had at the meeting. Um, one of the big issues too was the public, uh, opinion on this and, and how much opportunity did they really have? Uh, from our perspective, they had quite a bit. We had two planning commission meetings in the summer. Uh, and obviously two meetings with you, the Commissioners, and then the meeting on the fourth. Um, so just wondering, you know, how much more public opinion on this? Would we, would we need to? how much more public opinion on this would we, would we need to go for?
Yeah, there've been five public meetings. I was a little bit frustrated when former planning commissioner Bell got up and said, there's only been one meeting on this.
Yeah.
That's not the case. In fact, one of those meetings was a duplicate of the first one because Greg specifically asked to table the item until we get more public notice out. And so that was two public hearings that this item went for consideration at planning commission.
And I, I had personally visited every house on that road several times and made sure they were well aware of the planning commission meeting in July. And we got a lot of support, not support, but we had a lot of people show up and give their comments, good or bad. Ultimately, the planning commission was on board with it.
Is the planning commission seeing this?
No. That's one of the primary reasons I've come to chat with you guys about it. If you guys are comfortable with it, we can move forward. If you'd rather have the planning commission look at it, we can go back to the planning commission.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner.
You're not going to like my comments. Sorry. But I've recently had a shift. It's too much density out there. It's too far away from public transit stations. It's just close to the freeway. I'll give you that. But public transit, it's too high density for that area. It's where I'm at. That's way too high for me. I won't, I wouldn't vote for this. I'm just being straightforward. I appreciate it. You can take those down to, you know, 20 acre lots. I would give you a little more density than that, but I'm, not this.
You've gone way, way up in density here. When, you know, when you had it over this whole area, it really didn't look too bad. And, you know, it was quarter acres and maybe some stuff a little less. But man, in the meantime, in order to get your density in for your acreage, you're into townhomes and apartment buildings. And when I look at these streets, you know, I kind of thought these would be third acre, maybe half acre lots going along here. Well, now you've got three and four for every one of those building lots. And it's like, wow.
What size are they?
I don't know.
Between six, yeah, eight and 10, 6,000.
Eight to 10.
6,000, you say so?
I think there's a few 6,000 square foot.
Sorry. There's a ton in there.
Yeah, it was just the, we're preserving the density we have from the original.
6,400, 8,000.
6,000, 6, 64, 61. No, they're all six. 55 there.
Yeah. Well, my question, go back on the original screen. So my first question is, have you come to terms with these people right here?
I was just.
Yeah, if I was to call them and they say they're okay with this, then they're going to say no.
Her biggest complaint is she would have us, prefer to have us have a road on her north border. They're not in love with the smaller lots. But she would prefer to have the road on her northern border.
Right, right there.
And what's, what are these? Fourplexes, townhomes? What are these?
Yeah, they're.
How many units each of those buildings? 24 units in each building?
Three floors.
Apartments? Like the falls out by me, Gage. Yeah, like the falls out by me. And then what do you, what do you plan for commercial here?
Oh, one of the thoughts is storage units.
Storage units?
Not a lot of storage units out there in that area. And then we have retail commercial kind of plan for that corner of gas station.
Well, as Rick can tell you, planning, I'm not in favor of storage units anywhere near a highway that leads into a community. Unfortunately, these guys approved some in the valley before I came on board, what's happened.
And it is a conditional use.
To me, to me, that's not a place, we had this discussion, I had this discussion with Commissioner Harvey earlier. Our storage units need to go off the road. When you have storage units leading into your community, you have a bad community. So I'm, I'm dead on, I'm dead on arrival with that.
Okay, so the ordinance that we did get changed, which applies to the Yarra Valley as well as out west of the sea zones, make sure that you have to have it hidden behind another building, like a commercial building or something.
Yeah. And so, just so you know.
No, yeah. And it's, that's just impossible. And I know.
Don't, you know, don't bring a plan to me that shows anything storage unit anywhere we can see, that I can see from my.
And once again, this is conceptual, right? Where this is not a final site plan by any means, and we're here to get your opinions and.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How many, with the acres that you have floodplain, how many acres is that?
It's going to be about 45, I believe.
So this is taking up another 20.
It's actually about 30 acres.
This is taking, so it's 70 acres in total?
76 altogether.
76 altogether, you're going to, so about 40, 45.
170, 165.
So really with the floodplain, as it is right now, the way it's scheduled, you've got 40 lots to sell that are one acre lots. You have 40 homes to build, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the base density. I was kind of curious if we could, if we were to do a zone change to 130 acre lots and then use part of that increased density because of the theme of floodplain and get some townhomes and patio homes? Could we do something like that?
You're not, maybe with these two, you're not going to get any there. Not, not this far from where those two items I mentioned, public transit. So.
Well, what comes first, the transit or the public? That's the question.
Yeah, just telling you where I'm at.
I'm just questioning that.
Comes first. That's, I get it.
Chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, they had one transit line for all of West Weaver County and Plain City and Far West that run through there. And they didn't have enough riders, so they took it away. So we have no public transit in all of West Weaver County. Not one running today.
That's, well, that's my point. How else? They just want to drive a car. That's all there is to it. Well, if they're going to drive a car, that goes back to the question I had. That state highway from 1900 down, we've improved our road. When I say we.
From 4,700 to 100.
4,700, but the state's yet to say, so you're going to put 168 people there, I don't know how many over there, plus your commercial on a two lane road, that's, you know, that's a little excessive in my opinion. Now, if you can get, the state ought to come in and put ma- major improvements down to 4,700, at least a three lane.
So in the development agreement, we obligated the developer to installing whatever the UDOT requirement is here. So that'll be extra asphalt, that'll be curb better side, excuse me, sidewalk if necessary, pathway.
So if UDOT comes back and says we want a third lane in, they're going to put a third lane in?
Yeah, I've had a.
They're, they're going to have to. At least on their side of the road. I mean, UDOT's got to do improvements on the other side of the road.
So if they say, hey, we want 100 foot right of ones with an 80 foot road, you'll improve the 40 feet.
Yes, we are, we already know what.
But the railroad owns the other side, right?
Well, part of it, actually. UDOT owns a good part of it as well.
How much does, how much does UDOT own?
I have to pull it up on the county maps. Let me see what I can do here. In the meantime, we do know what the UDOT standard is. It's just right up on the other side of the bridge, right? It's the, because on the other side of the bridge, it's built almost all the way up to the bridge as, as a five lane road with quite a bit of shoulder.
I think the right away is 110 feet. I remember right.
110, that sounds about right.
110.
Yeah, for a five lane.
On the east side of the bridge.
Okay.
The western. And is the west the same as the east side, you mentioned?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Using this with a touchpad, it's not, but I'm mistaken.
I think the fundamental thing is, is there a pathway to townhomes, patio homes or apartments?
So let me tell you my opinion. So you know where I'm at. And is that you? Oh, okay. I've learned it was me.
I think it is you.
Is it? Oh, it's not me.
Oh, it's my daughter. Didn't realize what was going on.
Okay. The way I look at this right now, we're right in the middle of redoing our master plan. I know we're not a long ways from it. We're right buttoned up against it. We.
We've been at this a year.
We have, but we held our, we held our plan out there at West Weaver that night. It went really well. I think you guys got what you needed to do. I anticipate.
Writing right now, so.
Are you?
Yeah, we're.
Are you planning on another meeting like that?
No, not like that. Unless you guys want it. We just, we haven't budgeted for it.
No, in fact, I can.
I want one out from south.
We did have one in the.
I know, but it's advertising stuff.
We had terrible show, show for that. Yeah, it'd be nice to have.
Everybody outside said, well, I see almost nothing new here. The same thing he gives last time. And it's like, well, it's there, but you got to look for it. And I'd show them where the changes were, but they didn't see it, most of them. And they, a lot of them left thinking, well, it's a waste of our time. It's the same thing as it was before. And it wasn't, but they didn't look at it. So the way I look at this, I think we just need one more meeting where we get this pretty close to end and we're done. And so I really think our next meeting is between you and Planning Commission. And then you got to bring us in on the tail end of it and we're done.
The same meeting? Do you want to come?
I wouldn't mind being at that meeting.
Probably hurt, wouldn't hurt.
So, so. Because we're making some big decisions right now.
Yeah.
So once we get to that point, and I view this as a month out, maybe five weeks, then I'm willing to start talking to you and making some decisions.
Okay, that may, for me, I'd be there, that may help you with density, but right now, you might get me on that plan to 80, maybe. To 80 units? 80 half acre lots. Oh, half acre.
Well, of course, you're not going to get 80 half acres in there.
I'm just telling you, that's where I'm at about.
Yeah, if you, if you divide it out and say, well, I'll give you the value of 80, because half of it is wetlands, right?
I'm talking the whole piece, 80 homes out there, 80 single family dwellers. But just if you wanted an answer today.
The benefit of the, the way the floodplain is shaped is if you've got bigger lot sizes, your backyard is going to be in the floodplain.
Right.
And so you can actually fit a little bit more in there.
That gives them the benefit of that.
Well, I know, but all I'm questioning is half of that is in the floodplain where you can't build. So then, so are you saying he can have 80 and they'll be quarter acre lots because they'll be out here?
No, that, he's got 40 acres of good ground out there now. By the time you add the streets, adding the floodplain, floodplain backyards, he's got.
That's all I wanted to know. I didn't understand.
I believe in the answer today. That's what I'm there.
So we can, we can, could eventually develop and then we'd have to go through the process of getting Flo Mar or Lomar. So that, the grant is a hundred percent thrown out the door. It's just, you know, the path of least resistance is not going through the federal government to figure out.
Oh, sure. Well, I've got it written into a 40 health fee.
Oh, yeah, that's all right.
So let me just tell you where I'm at. Yeah, the, the 6,000, 8,000 square foot lots don't work for me. I think we've got to be up in that. I'm probably a little bit more liberal than Commissioner Harvey is. And I'd probably go quarter to 30 acre lots on part of it. That commercial area distresses me just because I'm not sure commercials ready out there right now. I want to see some definite plans on there. I don't want to see commercial and all of a sudden you come in a year from now and say, I can't sell any commercials, so I want to put high rise apartment, four story apartments on here. So it's got to be something we, I don't want them zoning commercial because if we see this happening, you can't go out and find any tenants for your commercial. Well, now it becomes multifamily, I agree. So that's not going to happen.
The development agreement takes the, the frontage of the property right about here and says that they will hold that and reserve it for commercial opportunities for the future. So basically, they won't play.
You, could you bring up that picture?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, let's see.
And then, I don't know, this, that concerns me a little bit in terms of the, the number of multifamily. I like the idea with townhomes. I like the idea of patio homes. I like having a mix. So I have no problem with townhomes. I have no problem with patio homes. You know, to me, that's over, over dense in terms of your apartments. I mean, I don't want to toss it in a couple of apartments, but to have 168 units there.
So just one thing on that, when we met with you guys in August, you said at four stories, right? Limited to four stories, let that set the density. So that's kind of where we're at. We haven't ever had a number. But when we met with you guys in August, it was, you know, four stories, let that set the density. So if there's, if we need to scale that back, we can, we're.
Probably depend, it probably depends on the elevation too of that. Absolutely. But I, I prefer, in that location, I prefer ownership over rentals, just because I think it helps keep the neighborhood, from what that, from what the neighbors tell us out there. Anyway.
That was actually one of the things I really liked about, where is it? About the original plan was, oh, that's not it. There we go. Here's the original plan, was essentially along the main roads, you've got the, that's where the townhomes are for primary occupancy, primary residential occupancy. And then in between, you've got the multifamily. So it's kind of.
Yeah.
Isolated.
I, I actually like that a little better than the other one.
If only the floodplain.
Yeah.
Only floodplain wasn't there.
If we can, we're okay to get back to that, you know. We'll definitely use density, but that's not the end of the world. So.
Show that, show that picture one more time. Yeah. Commissioner, how do you feel about? I kind of like that better than what you showed me before.
There's a, this picture, this is a project that I'm drawing up. We did a commercial kind of. Does this have any value? You have the, the commercial business on the bottom, the penthouse and above it.
I like that concept personally. So this is what we talked about with the, the village concept.
It's exactly what we've been discussing with the developer along 12th Streets as well, so.
Yeah, that has to be on the front of your 12th Street.
Yeah, I mean, this, this makes a lot more sense because then you have mixed use. You have, you don't have a big piece of ground with half developed commercial because you know you're going to fill your residential. You can always start with residential on this bottom level. As the commercial comes along, you fill it with commercial. A little more pricey upfront because you got to design it for commercial standards, but anyways.
So you've got a road that they're going to be going 50 miles an hour on, and they're going to pull over to get into these.
Well, that's why, that's why I was talking about the UDOT.
It'll be in the back.
So, yeah, they've got, they've got to flip that and then 2800, I'm assuming would have, what you show in the commercial would have some of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, our parking would be on the back. That's in agreement, that the parking would be in the back side of it.
Yeah, so they're going to see it, then everything's going to be off that backside. Sorry, I've got to run to it.
All right, Gage, thanks.
Thanks for your guide.
Thanks. All right, gentlemen. Anything else?
So your suggestion is we wait till this.
That's what I'd want to do.
Then we come back.
Yeah, and that, we're down to six, seven weeks here, six weeks. I don't think seven.
What's the, what's the general plan designation for this?
So far, right now, we're looking at exactly what you guys have proposed. You see there on the map?
Right there?
No, no, sorry, it's.
Oh, right here. Yeah, right there.
Show me again.
Which. Yeah, that actually consumes both sides. And what this does is it actually puts multifamily on the entire property with commercial along the, at, at the intersection along the frontage.
So that's. Can you zoom up on that? Does the county have any, oh, you're trying to relocate offices? You have any new places picked out yet?
Well, I think we've pretty much decided to stay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of dreaming of having a new camera building right here on this property with my office overlooking the river.
It would have overlooked, well, it was kind of underlooked the river. We were going to put you.
In the basement. Just, just give me, give me a fish tank with, that I can look into and I'll be fine.
You can see the ducks and the fish.
I don't have any questions. See, that's, for me, that's what I, I'd wait to.
And we were just worried that the plan would be pushed later, you know.
I don't.
It just sounds like it's moving forward.
I'd rather be straightforward and tell you hard things right now than you waste more time getting a commission meeting and have me talk, go talk about it to there. But I've had a pretty significant shift in my attitude with regards to density just in the last few days. And it's just, I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. Had to do with that stinking old snow basin road, Charlie. Wait till you see the softball. I'm going to lob in there.
So I'll know tomorrow.
Well, we definitely don't want to come in and push, you know, we've been, hopefully, our goal has been just to get, take what we're, you know, given. And we hope it doesn't seem like we've been trying to get more than we were expecting, but.
Listen, you don't, if you don't ask, you don't get, but that's too heavy.
Yeah.
I lean, or he is, on this. But I don't want to say how far it is because we haven't decided what it needs to be.
That's wise.
So over the next few weeks, it's going to take me a couple of weeks to write the plan, at least a draft and plan, and to kind of whittle down a final map. So over the next few weeks, it's going to take me a couple of weeks to write the plan, at least a draft and plan, and to kind of whittle down a final map. And then I plan on doing work sessions with the planning commission every week for about four weeks. Get them comfortable with the plan. And then after that, there will be you guys. So if all goes well, the planning commission actually gets it out.
That's far along to be.
That's right.
We're anxious to get going.
Yeah, early April at the latest in front of you guys.
Mid-March.
Mid-March.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
What is your, on the commercial, I know Frower said too much. Are you guys on the same opinion that too much commercial?
I have no opinion right now on that.
No.
Because I don't know what is zoned yet.
Okay. But when this, in the future, line use maps change, it's not immediately converting everything to those, right? That's just the future.
You have to apply for the free zone, which you guys have applied for.
But then everybody will know, we're going to approve them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as our approval, we have from the planning commission, that's good for one year. So will we, I mean, is it worth it to bring them back involved in this after that point and just say?
I think on this, I'll have to go look at the timeframe, but I think on this, you may be longer than a year, but.
Okay.
I'll have to, I'll have to look it up because it's legislative action, not, it's not like a subject of action.
All right.
Sounds good.
You guys got to be done. We got a couple of things to talk about. We're running out of time. So don't, don't you two leave.
Okay. Courtland was wondering whether or not you guys.
Sit back down.
Courtland was wondering whether or not you guys would want to go into an executive session regarding pending litigation?
Tonight?
Uh huh.
Yeah, do we have something going or something?
Well, it's. It's regarding the basin on my agenda tomorrow.
Uh. Pending litigation with, well, Commissioner, I'll motion that we go into a closed session to discuss pending litigation.
All right, I'll second that. I'll say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, so we're going into a closed session and we'll be back into dismissed, but I doubt we'll go any further beyond here. So just so everybody knows. Thank you.